To tonight's city council meeting. Information on how to watch, attend and participate, as well as agendas, minutes and recordings can be found at Broomfield's website at broomfield.org/councilmeetings. The public may also participate in public comment either in person or by calling 855-695-3744 and pressing star three to be placed in the queue for comment. Screeners will ask callers for their first and last name and the agenda item the caller would like to comment on. If you'd like to speak on more than one item on tonight's agenda, you'll need to press star three each time to be placed back in the queue for comment. Public comment will be limited to 90 minutes total per item. The first one through 15 participants have three minutes to speak. The next 16 through 25 have two minutes. And if time remains, the next 26 plus participants have one minute to speak. For those who wish to make public comment on the charter ballot questions, contracted waste hauling or the nonprofit grant programs this evening, there is a sign up sheet located in the lobby. For the other items, you can just come up to the podium when I call for public comment. And for the items with a sign up list, that list, along with the list of those calling in, will be used to determine the order of the speakers. We'll hear from six in person individuals and then one phone caller until we hit these limits. Priority will be given to those who indicated they are Broomfield residents on the sign up sheet. Nonresidents will have a chance to speak if time remains after Broomfield residents have made their comments. For our hard of hearing residents present, we have wireless headsets available in the back of the council chambers through our AV team. So the city council regular meeting is called to order. No council members are absent and a quorum of the council is present. So would everyone please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance? Thank you all. In an effort to keep order for tonight's meeting, I ask council members to limit their comments to five minutes. If council members are given an opportunity to speak for a second time, they should limit their comments to two minutes. We'll plan on a break at approximately 8:00 PM for 10 minutes. So we'll begin with council's review and approval of this evening's agenda. Council may add or remove items from the consent agenda or council may revise the order of business for the meeting. Does any member of the council have any comments or questions regarding this evening's agenda? Are there any objections to this agenda being approved? Saying none, the agenda is approved. There are no agenda items under petitions and communications this evening. So we'll go right into council member reports. Does any member of the council have any reports or updates this evening? Council member Lim.
Yes, I serve as the required county commissioner, representative to the Colorado Rural Workforce Consortium Board. And as such, I attended the two day meeting of the board in Pueblo, Colorado on August 5th and 6th. The state of Colorado paid the travel expenses for the board. The board meeting emphasized work based learning, including registered apprenticeships. And Broomfield's workforce center plans to increase outreach efforts in these areas to interested businesses and young adults. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mayor Protem Schaaf.
Thank you, mayor. So UA de Sister Cities delegation returned back to UA de this past Sunday, August 4th. I had the privilege of hosting one of the students from UA de during that week and was actively participating in the week's activities. One of the special activities that occurred was the Japanese cultural festival, which took place at Midway Park. This was the first time this event has occurred in Broomfield. Many of the delegation participated in the events and the presentations and the activities that occurred that day. And thank you to all those community members that came out and supported the delegation during that event. And a big thank you to all the community members for your volunteer hours to help promote the UA de Sister Cities program, the board, as well as the committee and the host families that hosted students during the week. So it was, it was a great, great time. We look forward to sending a delegation this next year over to UA de. And then again, in the subsequent year, having another delegation from UA de come back to Broomfield. Thanks, mayor.
Thank you very much. Any other council member reports? Well, I just have a little update from the property tax commission. We had a kind of a last minute meeting yesterday at the Capitol because there is pressure to hold a special session to try and make a deal with those running ballot measures 50 and 108. So it looks like that special session is imminent to further refine the administration's approval or fix for taxes. But it looks like the deal that they're going to cut would probably take an additional 255 million in 2025 for taxes owed in 2026. So it's going to be a big cut. But the, obviously, the purpose is to not take the cuts from 50 and 108. I was not supportive of the special session. I think, you know, we've already done this, so we'll see what happens. I do think that they're going to have it anyway. So stay tuned for more on that. It has to happen before September 1st in order to have a deal to remove those ballot measures. So the time is very short. All right, well, thank you all for listening. We'll now continue with general public comment. So this is an opportunity for the public to comment on matters other than those on the agenda. So if you'd like to be heard, please come up to the podium, state your name and neighborhood for the record and limit your comments to three minutes.
I'm from Country Estates. Madam Mayor, City Council Member, City Manager Hoffman. Good evening. The last time I was at this podium was June 2021, where my final farewell words were, and I quote, "It is your role to fully understand the impact that the Windy Gap debt has on the city's overall balance sheet and in particular on future water rates. Work diligently with staff and run downside cases. Be skeptical of everything you see." But here we are. In doing limited research, there are clearly established public works best practices and standards. How often you inspect something, when you replace it, number of water towers, lift stations, et cetera. If the public works department had a culture of use to fail, then it's concerning to say the least. How that was tolerated for the past 20 years and in particular how Mr. Rudd tolerated it for his career is beyond me. This accusation is so significant, I think councils should determine if it was true, who fostered it and why, and is the current director the correct person to change that culture? Regarding planning, staff starts with the premise there were no prior plans for at least 16 years and have already arrived at the conclusion that water rates should be raised 50% for their plan. The problem I'm having is that I can't find a cohesive analysis documenting how they came to that conclusion. The website I am referred to is a hodgepodge of reports that seem to contradict themselves. I did like the 7/19/2022 Willdan Report. It was presented in a format that was comprehensive and understandable. In that report, they state their analysis needs to be updated annually. I saw the explanation yesterday as to why AECOM was brought in and AECOM seems eminently qualified, but I've not seen a report similar to Willdan's financial analysis. Professional standards would dictate we need a comprehensive document, which is designed for the average investor, which is us, that includes all of the things planning documents should include. And my professional standards would say the financial information and analysis should be reviewed independently. Perhaps as concerning to me is the city manager's comment that we were counting on one golden egg after another in the enterprise yesterday. Without question, the planning we have done includes future developments like McWhinnie and Baseline. And our plan included commercial, you know, commercial and retail areas that require recruiting and a strong economic development plan. Securing the Flat Irons Mall wasn't luck. It was hard work. Broomfield seems to have lost its edge. Economic development was a huge priority to prior councils and it should be a priority to this one. I am concerned that the staff and city manager have decided they can't concentrate on future development and existing infrastructure at the same time. That could be economically disastrous. I yield my time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Luana Fletcher, Wilcox, Mayor, Council, Staff. Tonight I'm here to speak of all the failures of Broomfield. Safeway failed and now you want to put in a fake lake. Dollars to fill. Evaporation waste. Sloane's Lake stinks. And has it been required cleaning on several occasions? High dollars to citizens. Broomfield Event Center failed. High dollars to citizens. Water tank costs extra. Butterfly Pavilion, now I've heard this may or may not be so, might be a rumor. High dollar to citizens. Number, this is a pound three or a star three. No universal trash to increase cost to residents when you haven't have to apply fines or fees. It's a bad idea. It's a punishment to citizens. At this point in time, there should be no trips. No Zoom. No over budgets. No raises to any council members, staff or employees. And it's time to take a look at cuts except the police. I want to know why you didn't know any of these overages. There are no excuses. Who wasn't doing their job? Broomfield is in deep, deep trouble. Stop everything now. No new expenditures. None, naga zilch. Now, the way you can also tell that a city's failed? Take a look around. Drive. Look at the medians. Look at the side medians. Have you looked at the trees? How many dying? How many damaged? How many have problems? Have you seen the city watering? 90 degree days? All in the parks? Boy, their stuff's green, 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 but you're going to, you know, tax us extra dollars for our water. Tier one, tier two, tier three. Stop everything now. And like I say, the trees are a symbolism of this city right now. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're not going to do this clapping between comments. We've got a really long agenda, y'all, so let's just get to the next speaker.
Thank you, madam. Sorry, my first time up here.
Oh, it's okay.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members and senior staff. I actually have a couple of real positive things I wanted to mention about the city that I've been a resident of Ward Four in Anthem Highlands for 10 years now. One first thing was that we had a real HOA issue that is still contentious about a road that was put in as a driveway. And the city has worked with us over a period of five or six years to try and help alleviate that problem. And they went so far as to add a turn lane off of Lowell into the neighborhood that felt affected by the possibility that that driveway would be closed as a road. I, to me, it seems like they went above and beyond to try and help our neighborhood in that regard. So I wanted to say thank you for that. Second of all, after many years of hoping and wishing I could afford solar, thanks to the city, I'm now getting solar installed on the house. We're almost there. We need one more inspection from the city. But that was due to the program that the city performed, getting a group buying available to us that saved about $5,000 on the project. So that's it and thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, council and staff, thank you. My name is Rick Fernandez. I'm from Broomfield Heights and emailed a few of you earlier today about wants versus needs. And I just want to use an analogy. My wife and I love to vacation in Charleston. It's a great area, great place to go. We love to go there. We want to go there and we've been able to do that. This last week I had some car issues that needed to be addressed. It was a pretty expensive fix, but we took care of it. We prioritize that need over a want. Probably means we don't go to Charleston. That's, that happens. My issue that I want to bring with you this evening is wants versus needs as to the way that you have been looking at priorities. You can go back a number of different council meetings over the last seven months. Everything from focus sessions to charter amendments to council pay raises. And not a word said, for the most part, about the water fund and the enterprise fund. And now we find ourselves in a situation where we're looking down the barrel at a 50% increase on water rates. Instead of taking your time in terms of agendas which are packed, a number of us have been at these meetings and we know how long they go. Week after week, meeting after meeting with other wants that the city might have and the city council might have. One of them's here tonight. Universal trash hauling. I was hoping that the agenda would have been changed by a few of you on council to say we have a need related to the water fund. And then have a conversation about real possible options to address that issue. Council member Marsholson and I have gone back and forth on a few things in the last couple of weeks. He made a statement on social meetings saying, "All options are on the table." There were a few that I suggested. Lowering a property mill up your rate to help the citizens in this room with their property taxes so they could pay the higher water rates. That would mean the city would have to make some sacrifices on the operational budget. Stop talking about pay raises for the council and gear that type of a funding in terms of operations to public works. And then I mentioned universal trash hauling. Folks, we do not have the money and we do not have the ability to have another program where you've demonstrated, I think for the most part, that handling a water fund is a problem. Why in the world are you even considering yet another program when we have private enterprise and options to address that? I would hope that you would take a step back, focus on the issues in front of us and really help the citizens work this through and be collaborative and cooperative on it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Janet Sund. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council and staff. I wanted to piggyback on what they're saying and thank you very much for what you said. I wanted to mention the two things. I really wish that you would totally delete that 400 and something thousand dollars out of your development spending in your budget. We have no, we have no need to build any of these projects, just like the lake she was talking about, the city center, whatever any of those projects are. We just, we need to prioritize what we're doing. With regard to the water rates, I was just in Wellington, Colorado this weekend. Wellington, Colorado is on the verge of bankruptcy. They played the same game as you guys did. They weren't paying attention. The city manager, I think, is most at fault. You're the most responsible, most educated person in regard to the development and you allowed all this stuff to happen. Don't tell me that you were just riding high on fun. The city of Wellington is about to go bankrupt. The residents that have single family homes are paying $300 to $500 a month in water fees. The people that have the small half acre farm are paying $1,000 to $3,000 a month. And the rates continue to go up. So it's the same thing that's happening here, only they're a little bit ahead of us. And I just see these, I know the rates going up because Ken Rep provided those slides that showed what they're going to be doing in the subsequent future. And I shared that with the enterprise. So she was going to publish those rates so that the whole city can see what our future is. And all this other development and all these little fun things that you think you need in Broomfield, we do not need them. We need to focus on repairing what we have, sustaining what we have. We don't need to have any more playgrounds for the city council to get their little name plaques up there. You don't need that. Okay? Try to be responsible and be respectful to the citizens of Broomfield.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council and City Staff. My name's Dave Usher. I live in Anthem Ranch here in Broomfield. I'm a, been a Colorado resident for seven years. But what I've seen since I've lived here, I started getting more involved in the local thing because I want to be an active community member. But unfortunately, I came from a place where a lot of, a state where taxes were high and seriously abused. And I'm starting to see that here. Just a little bit, we're just hearing about the raises. I know y'all work hard and all that. That's another reason why we don't need to expand projects, give you something more to do. You know, it's my tax money. I'd rather have it in my own pocket rather than give you guys a raise. And I know it's kind of 50/50 on y'all, but I, I got some coworkers here that work full time and I retired in the sewer industry, wastewater. And they're making less than what you guys want to give a raise. And these people out here in zero degrees weather, taking care of our wastewater and stuff. And I'm just saying, there are a lot of people in need out here. So I think we need to quit wasting our money on projects we don't need until we get our budget under control. You know, just put a freeze on everything and then let's get our budget going. And, you know, I'm sure y'all deserve a little bit of a raise, you know, maybe something a little bit more reasonable than what I'm hearing. But again, I would just ask that, don't take on any more projects. Let's focus on the main thing, you know, keeping us safe, you know, taking care of our police force or fire people. And just let's make it really worth coming here. Because I'll be honest with you, it's getting so bad. I'm telling my wife, I want to sell and get out of Broomfield, but I don't really want to do that. I'd like to just maybe become somebody that can help make a change and encourage you all to do the same thing. So I know you took this job on to, you know, to serve us and to make this place better. So I'd really like to see that. So appreciate your time and, you know, please consider some of these suggestions here. That some of, it was very well put by a lot of other people. That's why it kind of threw me off because it's like, oh, they said that a lot better than I was going to. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak during general public comment? Please come on up.
Thank you, Mayor, Protem, council members. I just have a quick comment.
Can you identify yourself?
My name's Bill Cruthers. I'm from Northmore.
Okay, thanks.
Every company I worked at went through hard times. And when they go through hard times, the first thing they do is freeze stuff. No more hire. No, we're going to watch the budget. We're going to do this, we're going to do that to get themselves out of trouble. You guys are going the exact opposite way. The farther in debt you get, the more money you want to spend. Doesn't work.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, we're going to move on to reports. Next under reports is the 2023 audit and review of the annual comprehensive financial report. Council has a copy of the agenda memorandum, which I'll ask our staff to summarize.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, community and council. Graham Clark is making his way down. He's the interim finance director. Mr. Clark.
Hello, council. Mayor Protem and mayor. Tonight we have Matthew Moreno and he is representative of Ruben Brown, who is our auditor for this year. And I'm going to turn it over to him. He's got a few slides to go through to talk about this year's audit for 2023. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Graham. So I'm going to primarily present from the viewpoints document because it's a good summation of the audit process. So if somebody can go to the next slide or can I drive from up here? Okay, perfect. One more slide. One more. Okay, so when I, one more. Thank you. So when I say an audit, we kind of do actual several audits. So we audit your financial statements. So your finance and accounting team puts together your financial statements. It's over a 200 page document at this point. That document gets submitted to several agencies, the state, federal agencies, as well as it gets submitted to the Government Finance Officers Association for the certificate in excellence in financial reporting. And then also because Broomfield receives and expends more than $750,000 of federal grant money, there's an extra audit commonly called a single audit or a federal expenditures audit. So we also do that. So it's in draft right now because we're just wrapping up and leaving it open for any comments we might receive as a result of this meeting and kind of make sure that we have all of the little things buttoned up because the GFOA certificate program is very rigorous and they do like to kind of make sure that everything looks well to earn that certificate. So that's why we're in a draft form at this point. But we do plan on issuing an unmodified opinion. So that, I know that sounds very unexciting, but unmodified is a clean opinion on financial reporting. We also will issue a report over the financial reporting of the entity in compliance with governmental auditing standards. And we also will issue that single audit report that I'm referencing. So if we go forward one slide. So this whole document is my communication to you as your auditor. We have to perform our audits within professional standards. I'm a licensed CPA. There are standards I have to follow. This is me communicating to you officially as your auditor. The left hand side is to what I'm supposed to communicate to you and the right hand side is to kind of let you know what's going on. So in every set of financial statements, there's certain things that are disclosed. In footnote one is your significant accounting policies. You might notice something a little different if you looked through the financials this year. There was a new governmental accounting standards board standard that we had to implement. It was not a small task. It was GASB 96, which has to do with subscription based information technology arrangements. I'll, I'll really simplify it for you because it's like a couple hundred pages and you won't want to be in that detail. But basically, if you think about the way you used to buy computer software, you used to buy a disk and you used to own it until it quit working. That's not how software really works anymore. Usually you have it on an annual or multi-year contract. Sometimes those vendors are storing your data. And so inherent in those contracts is an obligation of some sort. And so this standard is really looking and saying, let's put things that we consider longer term on the books as not quite debt, but an obligation saying, we have a multi-year agreement with this organization to provide subscription based, subscription based information technology arrangements. You have over 200 different softwares that you use as a, as an entity. Not irregular, but it takes some time to do some analysis on. Those agreements weren't written to contemplate the governmental accounting standards board standard. They were written for selling software. And so that took some time on your finance and accounting team to do that analysis. We're to the point where we've gotten that done and it's implemented in the financial statements. So that's a new thing that you'll report in there. Really nothing that I need to report that's outside the ordinary with, other than that, just because it's new and it's very similar to leasing standard we did last year, if you remember that, if you were on council last year. The good news is the governmental accounting standards board will give us a reprieve for 2024. The standard isn't as robust as the last couple of years have been. So I'm sure finance and accounting will enjoy that little lighter load on the accounting's reporting perspective. We go to the next slide. Inherent in every set of financial statements are estimates. So the estimates that we're seeing in your financial statements are what we would expect to see in a city and county. The main ones are the estimate of your infrastructure. How long are roads going to last? You go through a, a assessment where you say, is it in good condition, fair condition, needs repair, and that gets disclosed. And then that helps drive how your budgeting process is going to work. Also, there's an estimate of the appreciable lives of other things that aren't infrastructure. So buildings, equipment. It's an estimate because we don't know exactly how long a building will last. We have a pretty good idea based on historical context. There's also estimates with regard to the leases and the subidas or the subscription based information technology arrangements. You have to make certain discount rate assumptions and other estimates. And then the last estimate has to do with the pension obligations that we have as an organization. We rely on actuaries to help us come up with the estimate of how much we're going to need to fund to fulfill those retirement obligations for those employees that we've had over time. And so that's also an estimate. All the estimates we see in there are things we would expect to see. They look very, what, what we would expect to see and the, the amount of disclosures you'll see in the footnotes of the financials, it's like 40 pages just on the pension disclosure. So there's a lot there. Go to the next slide. I'm just wanted to highlight up a couple of key disclosures for you. The first one is your footnote three, which talks about how do we value assets? You know, we have various investments we hold as an organization. And so those are valued based on fair value or kind of the market value at the 1231. You have your disclosures of your long-term liabilities or your debt on note seven. You have note eight, which talks about your employee retirement obligations. Note 14 talks about your disclosures of future commitments. Note 16 talks about disclosure of developer agreements. And then note 17 talks about certain funds were in excess of their appropriations. Next slide. As part of the audit process, we're to make you aware of all the audit adjustments that we proposed as part of the audit process. They're attached to the back of this document. I won't go through those in detail. You'll see several of them are denoted as prepared by client or proposed by client. That's your finance team asking to either record something, correct something, not something we found, but there are some that we did also correct as part of the audit process and those are attached in the back. As part of the audit process too, we also aggregate all any misstatements that we find that might be smaller in dollar, but we don't feel that they would change the financial picture. And so those are also attached in the back as well. Next slide. Let's see, ninety-six, we already talked about. Um, we did encounter some delays in finishing the audit process. Let's say your finance team has been short-staffed throughout twenty twenty-three. I would say they're staffed now, but there's a learning curve. Uh, this this stuff's not easy. I get to do it all day, every day, and I still have to work with people at my firm to kind of work through it. So. We worked through it together, but it I I would say the timing's not where anybody wanted it to be and we, there's no excuses about it. It's just is what it is. It's been a busy couple of years for finance and accounting. Really no disagreements with management that we need to make you aware of. Um, and then at the end of the audit, we're hope to wrap it up in the next week to ten days. We'll ask for a representation letter from management just saying. When we asked for information, you responded truthfully. Um, you provided us all the information we needed and um, that's uh really what that is. Go to the next slide. I'm in accordance with the auditing standards, we did issue the governmental auditing standards report over financial reporting. Included in that in the packet is we did issue material weakness over internal control or financial reporting. It's similar to the finding that we did issue last year. I do want to make it clear, your management team is not ignoring what we're saying. It just takes time to get your people up to speed, get them trained. And get everybody doing their new roles and learning everything. So it is a repeat finding. We did see progress, but not enough to where I could make it go away. If we go to the next slide. Um, included in the financial statement is a whole bunch of other information other than your base financials. So in the back, you'll see a lot of statistical data. And other data, like I said, it's over two hundred pages and this is really just talking about that we look at that, make sure it looks. Consistent with what we're seeing, but we we don't necessarily audit all of the data because it's uh not necessarily things I could audit like. You know, where people live and so on. I would be here all day, every day, and you guys would say, get out of here. If we go forward. I mentioned a little earlier, we do a federal expenditures or commonly called a single audit. So we um rotate through the different programs that we have to audit. So it's on a risk-based approach. So really, we're auditing larger programs more often, medium-sized programs on a rotating basis. So this year, we had three programs we audited. We audited um your COVID nineteen or your ARPA money, which is commonly, and so that was one of the major programs. We also audited temporary assistance for needy families. And the Medicaid cluster. We did issue a two findings with regard to the single audit. The first one has to do with the preparation of your schedule of expenditure of federal awards. And it's just like it sounds. What did we spend our money on with regard to federal awards? And so um, when we looked at that report, we had to work with management to get get it reconciled down to make sure we were looking at the right programs and auditing the right programs and that. Reconciled with the financial data that we had, similar to what we had last year. But they did devote significant more people to that process, but several of those people didn't start till mid-year. It's not an easy process. Um, it's the CFA has, I wouldn't guess how many lines on it at this point, but you can see there's a lot of different lines, a lot of different programs. So it takes a lot of special knowledge to get there. Teams were working very hard on it, but we did issue a material weakness over that. And then we did repeat our finding with regard to the internal controls over the temporary assistance for needy families and the Medicaid cluster. So I want to caveat that a little bit. It's internal control over compliance. We did not know where people got the benefit that they shouldn't, but there wasn't necessarily a. Peer review or a consistent peer review whereby somebody was reviewing other people's work. And it's not to say they weren't reviewing things, they were reviewing things, but the Broomfield has a certain policy whereby a certain number of. Case files need to be reviewed on a certain interval and that was not happening. So that's a repeat finding as well. If we go forward in our slide, um, as I mentioned a little earlier, um, we're on GASB. We have one more slide. So this GASB one-on-one, I've been doing this just short of twenty years and they've been very busy issuing GASBs. I alluded to it a little bit earlier. This has to do with compensated absences. Um, your finance team will work through evaluating the um impacts of the financials going forward. But I do not expect to be the level of lift that leases and the subidas were. So hopefully a good reprieve so they can concentrate on. The 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 usual transactions and not worry about implementing new standards. So that is the summary of the audit process. I could be here all night, but I know you guys have a tight agenda, so I I'll turn it over for questions.
All right. Well, thank you very much. We will um proceed with public comments on this item, uh, starting with in person. If anyone would like to be heard. Please make your way up to the podium, state your name and neighborhood for the record and limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Roxy Julal Lacamoire, uh, mayor, council, staff, and everybody, thank you for showing up because I'm normally the only one here almost. First of all, uh, last year, when he came up and gave his audit information, I did praise him for not sitting there giving it ad a void for the city for doing such a good job. I think he pretty well bit his tongue on that one at this one too. Although this information means absolutely nothing to us. So unless we see the audit and see what's going on. This was kind of a waste of time for the public, at least that's how I see it. And I do bookkeeping, so um, I want to see the paperwork. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, um. I would like to know, uh, there's different types of audits. There's financial audits. There's all kinds of different audits. I would like to know what the audit is for procedures and processes. Under the city of Broomfield, for instance, all of the missing water features that seem to have. Been found titles missing. Where's that paperwork stored? There's got to be an audit done on the processes and procedures to make sure things are done correctly. Is there anything?
This is public comment on the audit. It's not a question and answer.
I'm I'm just asking if. There is an audit for anything other than the financial part.
One of our staff members can talk to you offline, um, because we're talking about a different audit right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, we'll go to, there's none online, so we'll go to questions from council next. Any member of council, council member Marsh Holschen.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just to clarify the residents' questions, uh, this is just the financial audit, right? This is of our of our books to make sure they all line up and are.
This is a financial and a single audit of your federal expenditures, so um that it would not necessarily get to that specific detail on that specific matter.
And just to um, a comment on Ms. Jewell's comment, this this two hundred and forty-nine page audit report is available online. It's it's a chat store agenda item for the tonight. Um, I just had one question. I have a couple notes in here. That I'm very happy with our financial position. For example, um, our ending fund balance for the year was two hundred and fifty-five million dollars, which was up forty-five million dollars from the previous year. So that's an encouraging thing to me. On the other side, our operating loss on on the enterprise was was obviously concerning and that's something that everybody will be having comments about. I just had one question specifically, actually directly to the enterprise system. Am I reading this correctly on page? Sorry, page fifty-two of the of the PDF, which is page something of the report. Page thirty-seven report. It lists the total assets for the total enterprise funds as seven hundred and forty, seven hundred and eighty-four, one hundred and sixty-six, five eighty-one. Is that correct?
I can pull it up, but let me.
My only question, this is not necessarily a question for you, but it's also a question for staff and this is maybe a later discussion, but the AECOM report on the water rates lists our. Assets for enterprise at three point one billion. I'm I'm curious to know the discrepancy. That's that's a four hundred percent discrepancy. So I'm curious to know what that. Is from.
I'll tell you the way that it works for the financial statement audit. I haven't seen the other report you're referencing to. So when we do financial reporting, it's at historical cost. So I don't know if the other thing has got a current market value of that. That's would be my question, so.
That's helpful. Thank you. That's the only thing I had, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Any other council member questions? Council member Lim.
Um, would the staff like to address any of the findings since they were? The consult, the auditor pointed out that they were repetitive. He thought that they were. Be they would have had some progress made, but would staff like to address that?
Appreciate that um, ability to fill in, council member Lim. Yes, all three of those um had an action plan attached last year. And as the auditor said, significant progress doesn't mean checking the box. Staff is um continuing with our internal auditor. Bernie Block, who's in the audience this evening and can certainly speak to that resident. More in depth about the additional audits that go year-round throughout every department, whether it be finance or the SOPs, which is standard operating procedures. With regards to uh, so those are three individual departments, council member Lim, um, all of which have uh work plans. That haven't significantly been been modified from last year. As it continues to be a work in progress, we're all confident. That as we come into next year, not just from a staffing perspective, um, being fully staffed in finance, but also coming out of the GASB. It took a tremendous amount of time and load and it happens to be the same time that we're doing the budget. So from those internal auditor perspectives from uh Mr. Block working. With HHS, um. Great progress continues to be made. And again, the work plan has not been altered. We're just moving through it. Um, and anticipate by mid-year next year, um, that significant progress turns into um. Not having a finding next year as we move into twenty twenty-five.
Thank you. Any other council member questions? Comments? All right, well, thank you very much. We'll now continue with the report section of the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Manager Hoffman, do you have any reports this evening?
I do not. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rogers, any reports?
No, thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you both. Council's consideration of the consent items is next. The clerk will read all of the consent items by title. And there'll be one opportunity for public comments and council questions and comments. Will the clerk please read agenda items six A through six H by title?
Six A, approval of minutes from the July twenty-third, twenty twenty-four regular city council meeting and the July thirtieth, twenty twenty-four special city council meeting. Six B, resolution twenty twenty-four dash ninety-one, approving an agreement with Lighthouse Transportation Group LLC. Citywide traffic signal and street light pole replacement. Six C, resolution number twenty twenty-four dash ninety-eight, approving the issuance of a water license to Mile High Water Company. Six D, resolution number twenty twenty-four dash one oh two, approving amendment one to the consulting agreement by. By and between the city and county of Broomfield and Feinsberg, Holt and Ulevig for the US. Two eighty-seven, one twentieth Avenue Side Path Infill and Transit Access Improvements Project. Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash one oh three, approving the construction agreement by and between the city and county of Broomfield for. Nora Concrete Construction Company for the US two eighty-seven and one twentieth Avenue Side Path Infill Transit Access Improvement Project. Six E, resolution number twenty twenty-four one oh dash one oh four, approving the construction agreement by and between the city and county of Broomfield. And Western States Reclamation LLC for the Northmore Park Playground Replacement Project. Six F, resolution number twenty twenty-four dash sixty-three, approving a master license agreement by and between the city and county of Broomfield. For Hyper Fiber of Colorado LLC. Six. Six G, resolution number twenty twenty-four dash ninety-nine, approving a master license agreement by and between the city and county of Broomfield by. BIF for Intrepid OPCO LLC. Six H, executive session request for legal advice regarding business development.
Thank you. We'll now proceed with public comments on these items, starting with in person. If anyone would like to be heard, please make your way to the podium. State your name and neighborhood for the record and limit your comments to three minutes.
Okay, Roxy Julal Lacamoire. I already said my greetings to you. And it's too hard for me to go back and forth to say which item this was, but it has to do with the licensing for the Mile High Water District. Or the water company, Mile High Water Company. In twenty nineteen, the council had decided to um take away to eliminate the need to demonstrate a hardship and remove the. Three additional water licenses uh per year limit on future requests from the Mile High Water Company. The reason this was done was because. People were selling their properties and they couldn't sell them with the well. So they needed their water hookups. So Broomfield council at that time said, hey, let's just go ahead and do it. We got plenty of water, you know, we're just fine. Okay, this development was adamant about not being part of Broomfield. I mean adamant. They wanted nothing to do with Broomfield. But in order to make a whole bunch of money off the property they have, they sure do like the water. So maybe the council should look back on this and change this back because you can change it again. And put it back and let Adams County, which has water across the street from them, go ahead and service them their water. Instead of us doing it. And I don't want to hear that we're already doing it. We need to continue. No, we do not have to continue. And I know they pay a good rate. I mean, that's what they said last time. They pay a good rate. Well, they're paying a really good rate when they sell their house for millions of dollars when they paid. Maybe twenty or thirty thousand at the time that they bought this piece of property because these are not small, little. Eighth of an acre places like our house is set on. Some of these are an acre or more, five acres. So. This needs to stop on this one. Um, I have some other stuff to add about some of the other ones, but I don't remember what it was. And since we're talking water, this is one that's fixable. You could say no.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right, we'll move over to council comments and questions next. Does any member of council have any questions on these items? Council member Lim.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to say thank you to staff um for uh up for updating the um contract or making the template available. For the internet service providers. Um, we've certainly heard from residents. Across Broomfield that they would like better internet infrastructure and um staff had been working on. Updating our template to allow providers um to um. Put in the infrastructure for that. So uh, there's on the consent agenda, there are two internet providers and um. We appreciate staff's efforts and their efforts to update our broadband services in Broomfield. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Council member Marsh Holschen.
Thank you, Mayor. I have some questions for staff on six D, the um. The sidewalk project. Um, I appreciate the answers that I got. Via email that I asked earlier, but I just want to kind of reiterate it. Um. Can we talk about why this project ends at rain? There's a significant amount of. Broomfield that does not have sidewalks and hasn't had sidewalks for a very long time, um, all of which happens to be in my ward. Along one hundred and twentieth and it's not safe for for people to walk that direction. So can we talk about why this does not include that?
Brian Graham is making his way down to the podium. And I'm sure he's going to conclude with, um, there's a finite pot of money. There's a prioritization schedule. It's a repeatable process. And how equity plays a role in that. Could you walk us through that, Mr. Graham, please?
Sure, thank you. Uh, good evening, council, uh, mayor, mayor pro tem. My name is Brian Graham. I'm the capital improvements program manager in our community development department. So uh, to answer your question and apologize if we didn't answer it adequately uh based on your email. Staff applied for a for a grant for this project and as with all federal grants or or state grants, we try to match the. The funding available to a project scope. And in this case, staff matched the number one priority from some previous planning. from some previous planning efforts where we identified the greatest number of safety issues, be it pedestrian and bicycle deaths or severe injury crashes. We're most significant in the project area from Quay to Vrain Street. In addition, projects are underway or already exist in the planning process for the area to the east of Rain, one being the Nissan Channel Project, which will include a multi-use pedestrian trail and future opportunities for developer-led sidewalks there on the north side. Now granted, the south side is in Westminster, but there is a continuous multi-use path east of Rain to Lowell and perhaps beyond that service bicyclists and pedestrians in that quarter. Just, there is obviously, as you've noted, a gap on the north side that unfortunately US 287 and 120th is not a Broomfield street, unfortunately or fortunately. But for that reason, we don't have a project in the plan or in the five-year CIP plan for that segment of roadway at this time.
Do we have an estimate on how much it would cost to complete the sidewalk in that section?
We do not. We haven't undergone that planning effort, or at least not to my knowledge. I did actually speak with our transportation planning manager, you know, ahead of this meeting, and she estimated that that segment from Vrain to Lowell might be in the same general cost parameters of this project, you know, $2.5 million, but that was off the top of her head guess.
One final question. You mentioned the development. If developer, we've seen proposals, we've seen consult reviews on that section just east of Perry. I understand that if they bring forward a development, that sidewalks will be part of that. There's a section to the east of Rain, west of there, in front of a current existing business, that there's no sidewalks. And I know that that business has done several expansions recently. Is there a reason why the sidewalk wasn't a requirement for licenses with regards to that expansion?
Excuse me one second. Could someone please silence their phone? It sounds like there's a little music going on. So I know it's in kind of that area. I don't know whose phone it is, but... Did y'all get it? Is there any way that we would have music coming through our speakers? No, my IT team's saying no. Okay. I like that. I'm sorry. Thanks for checking. Okay, continue. I'll let you know if it happens again.
I apologize. That's an area outside of my expertise, but something I'd be happy to follow up on.
I appreciate that. All right. Thank you. That's all, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments or questions from council? All right. Before asking for a motion, I want to remind everyone that Item 6H contains a request for executive session, which requires two-thirds approval of council. Is there a motion by council that Consent Items 6A through 6H be approved? Councilmember Ward?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Win?
Seconded.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? No discussion from council? Then please cast your vote electronically. Okay. Oh, thank you. All council members have entered their vote, and the results will be displayed on the screen. And that passes unanimously 10 to 0. Thank you. The first item under Action Items this evening is the Public Hearing in Council's Consideration on Second and Final Reading of Six Proposed Ordinances Regarding Ballot Questions to Amend the Broomfield Charter. I'll now declare the public hearing open. Council has a copy of the Agenda Memorandum, which I'll ask our staff to summarize. Ms. Rogers?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Potem, council, members of the community. As the mayor mentioned, tonight is the second reading and public hearing on various charter ballot question ordinances. These readings would put these questions on the ballot for the ultimate decision by the voters. Next slide. I'm going to review a little bit of background. I know we've had multiple meetings to talk about charter. This will be our last one. It has to be our last one because we have deadlines to make the ballot. The charter was adopted in 1974. That was the year Broomfield became a homeworld city. In 2022 and 2023, council established a Charter Review Committee with five residents and two council members, who were appointed in March '23. Between April and November, the Charter Review Committee met, and they went through each section, each line of the charter. In November of '23, the committee presented its final report and recommendations to city council. Next slide. The process to amend the charter is an ordinance, a first reading and second reading with the ballot question that would go to the public. This has to be done before this, honor before this meeting because of Secretary of State's deadlines for ballot preparation. If approved, the question is put on the ballot, and the voters either approve or reject the question. The change would go into effect immediately unless the question had a different effective date. And again, the voters have the ultimate approval. After the, next slide. After the ballot question is approved, government funds and resources are not to be used in opposition or support for any ballot questions. This means that official time and official funds cannot be used, again, just to advocate or oppose. Elected officials and Broomfield employees may use personal time and personal funds to take positions on ballot issues. And of course, residents and interested stakeholders can create issue committees related to any ballot question. We are permitted to provide information and resources to the public, similar to a blue book, although there isn't a blue book for local questions. We do have a website, Charter Ballot Questions 2024. It's linked to the city council page with general, non-advocacy information, and that will be modified depending on how the vote goes tonight. Next slide. There have been multiple council meetings about the charter changes, starting in November 2023. We had study sessions where council discussed the recommendations from the committee. There was first readings of a possible repeal and reenact, which council rejected. We came back with specific questions, one of which has already been approved. It's Ordinance 2239. That'll be on the ballot. Tonight, we'll have second reading and final approval of six additional ballot questions, five that council talked about on July 9, and one regarding the length of the mayor's term that was talked about on July 30, and that brought us to tonight. Next slide. So I'm going to go over each ballot question that is up for public hearing and second reading tonight. Before I get started, I do want to note that the district attorney has a ballot question proposal as well. That is a different item that will be discussed after council discusses these charter ballot questions. All right. The first one is Ordinance 2243 on term limits. Second one addresses rezones by resolution. The third one is about publication of our ordinances on our website. The fourth one is changes to the Personnel Merit System section. The next one is changes to the Legal and Judiciary section. And the last one, as I mentioned before, addresses the length of term for mayor. Next slide. We'll start with the term limits. Term limits are different than the length of term. The length of term for council members is already set for the mayor and for council members at four years and two years respectively. We're going to talk about length of term later. This proposed ordinance would put a ballot question to the voters that would add term limits for elected officials to be three consecutive terms. So for council members with four-year terms, that would be potentially 12 years if reelected by the voters. Right now, we do not have term limits in our charter. So with the absence of a provision, Broomfield looks to state law, which is at two terms per four-year elected terms or three-year, three terms for a two-year elected term like our current mayor. Next slide. The actual question would be posed to the voter about shall Section 4.3 be changed to limit a council member and mayor to no more than three consecutive terms in office, provided that they are reelected. Next slide.
Excuse me. She is, you're out of order.
I can get you a copy, Roxy, if you'd like. Can we get Roxy a copy of the slide deck, please? Thanks. I will, I will try to go a little bit slower. My apologies. Or keep them on the screen longer. So the next slide is Ordinance 2244. It's a good reminder. I know I talk fast. Proposed Ordinance 2244. Now I gotta catch up my own slide deck, which, which is, which would revise the language in the charter to require that land use for rezones in specific land use cases, land use cases, excuse me, for a specific property be approved by resolution, not ordinance. As council knows, and members are our public who attend a lot of our meetings, when we have land use decisions, oftentimes you have three resolutions related to the land use and then a hanging ordinance because it's a rezone. And this is the reason why it's in our charter. This was a recommendation by staff that was made to the Charter Review Committee, and it's a passed-on recommendation from the Charter Review Committee. Next slide. This would be the actual ballot question. Shall 6.4 of the charter be amended to permit council to approve rezonings and other land use cases related to a specific property by resolution at a public hearing? I think that specific property is very important. We're not talking about large rezones. Next slide. All right. The next potential ballot question would modify the publication requirement of ordinances so that they're required to be published on the website rather than in a newspaper. Ordinances can be published in a newspaper upon council's direction. This was a staff recommendation to the committee, and the committee has passed on the recommendation to council, getting us to this ballot question. We know that the traffic to our website is good. A lot of people look to our website for information, and this also provides the option that we can always publish in the newspaper as well. And nothing restricts the city from publishing articles about a possible ordinance that might come up or having the newspaper do an article that they want to write, let's say, about these charter change ordinances. Next slide. The actual ballot question would be, shall 6.9 of the charter be amended to require publication of ordinances on the website and permit, but not require, publication in a newspaper of general obligation, general circulation? Next slide. There's provisions in our charter regarding personnel, the employees that work for the city and county of Broomfield. It's Chapter 9. On, again, staff recommendations made to the Charter Review Committee and passed on to council were updates and revisions to the Personnel Section that would, well, I'll show you where the language got updated. It would retain the Personnel Merit System for permanent employees. It would also set forth a right in the charter to an administrative appeal for non-provocationary employees. It would clarify that all department heads and senior leadership are excluded from the system. And I want to explain this edit. The chief was included in the Personnel Merit System, and all other department heads and leadership were excluded. That was in the original charter. The committee didn't feel like that was still needed. The reason that you want your leadership excluded is because this is a system that gives employees rights to appeal. So we, the department head sits on the side of the employer when you go through those appeal. And it would remove the reference to the Personnel Merit Commission, which is the body that hears appeals. The reason for this was to take that out of charter. It remains in our code and then can be modified and updated to make a commission that works best for the employees and the management of Broomfield. So those were the updates. This is how the ballot question would look. Next slide. Proposed Ordinance 2247 is an update ballot question as well. It addresses a section about the city and county attorney office and the municipal court office. On the city and county attorney side, it would broaden the language to recognize that in the city and county attorney's office, we employ paralegals, admin assistants, and a risk and safety manager, not only attorneys. And it specifies that special counsel works under the direction of the city and county attorney. This is important because the city and county attorney serves at the pleasure of council. So no special counsel can go outside what city council would direct the city and county attorney to do. That's very wordy. I apologize. On the municipal court side, this revises this section so that the presiding judge shall be the department head for the court. That's our current proposed setup for the court and how it's operating right now with Judge Bachman. And the judge will hire and supervise associate judges and such staff as needed by the court. Our court has expanded a little bit over time with the increase in population, increase in tickets, and increase in community, community programs. And it modifies the requirements for removal that were in there from 1974 to match them with the Colorado Code of Judicial Conduct. If you've been reading the news, this is a big update. We want to have the most serious regulations applicable to judges also apply to our judges. Next slide. The actual question would be a bulleted one again. Chapter 10 Legal and Judiciary be amended to update language, recognize the city attorney employees, both assistants and not attorneys and non-attorney staff, specialize, special counsel works under the direction of the city attorney, who serves at the pleasure of council, recognizes that the presiding judge hires and supervises associate judges and would be the department head for courts, and sets the reasons for removal to be consistent with the Code of Judicial Conduct. The last question, next slide, goes to the length of the mayor's term. Again, this is different than a term limit question. The ballot question would ask the voters if they want to extend the mayor's length of term from two years to four years, starting with the mayor elected in November 2025. Next slide. The actual question would sort of ask for the extension from two years to four years, but also let people know that it is currently four years, two years right now. In some outreach with the public, we learned that many of our residents didn't know that our mayor had a two-year term. One question that we have received on the mayor's term limit question. If the mayor's term length question passes and the term limit question passes, would it apply? Yes. So the mayor would be subject to three term limits. If the mayor's term length fails, term limit passes, it would, it would be three terms for the two-year-term mayor, so six years total. If the mayor length term passes and term limits don't, the mayor would be limited to two terms per state law. Next slide. That's my last slide, Mayor, for the presentation. I am here for questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Rogers. We'll now proceed with public comments. If anyone would like to be heard on these items, please make your way up. Oh, we do have a sign-up list of people who wanted to speak. So our first speaker is Janet Sund, and then Bill Cruthers, then Sandy Anderson, and then Jan Billsborough.
As far as the rezoning, I don't like the idea of you just rezoning an area without input from the city, from the population. I would say no to that. I don't think it's right that you do things and the citizens not have any input for public publication of ordinances. I feel they should be also in the newspaper. There's a lot of people that I know that do not use computers. They're not on the Internet. They're not, they don't have the phones, and they relied on the Broomfield enterprise to look up stuff. And that's something I want to bring back. I know we talked about that a month or two ago, and people said no, but there's so many people that are out of the loop just because they're not getting the paper anymore. So ordinances need to be posted. They need to, they need to have consideration about what's going on in their property, just like the ordinances were not posted where the water towers are going. That, that was a significant boo-boo. Let's see. I think that's it.
All right. Thank you very much. Bill Cruthers, you guys can line up by the podium to be more efficient. Sandy Anderson, and then Jan Billsborough.
Just a statement. Bill Cruthers, Northmore, again. As far as the term limits go, I just want to remind people that one of the reasons you have term limits is to get some new blood, new ideas, new concepts. have term limits is to get some new blood, new ideas, new concepts into this, and the other thing is, it promote, or it does not promote, is that you get the, the good old boy networks going, you get the personal agendas. Eight, 12 years is a long time to have the same people, especially if you don't agree with them. That's just too long for us to have to deal with some of this stuff. So, hopefully, this'll, this'll get shot down when it comes up, but I think everybody's been in here long enough. The other, I heard a comment a few meetings ago, well, it takes time for people to learn their job in the council, or as a mayor, or whatever. If you're on a four-year term, if you haven't learned your job by the fourth year, you're not the right person for that job. It, it's just the way it is. And we just, we need to get away from that line of thinking. So, that, that's my thing on the term limits, it's just, we really need to think about that a lot. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Sandy Anderson, and I live in the Broadlands, excuse my cold, mayor, mayor pro tem, council members, and city leadership staff. I'd like to thank you for all that you do, as it is well beyond what is understood, acknowledged, and you all deserve our respect and support. Pertaining to tonight's agenda, you have my support on increasing the mayor's term of office from, to four years from two, similar to Erie's four-year mayoral term. Just to note, Erie has 35,000 residents, they're planning on growing eventually to 60,000. We had 77,650 based on projections from our 2020 census. So, here's a town of Erie, less than half our size, planning for their future. In fact, you have my support for all of the charter changes. Having the vision, competency, and acumen to continue Broomfield's progress is essential. The acknowledgement of continuity of leadership in the dual roles of representing us as a city and a county should take precedence over any fear mongering. In closing to all of our electeds, let me remind you that you were voted in by the citizens of Broomfield. You won your elections, and you are who we choose to represent us and make the decisions that are best for Broomfield. You have our trust, you have our support, and you have our vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, city manager Hoffman and staff. I'm specifically wanting to talk with you regarding ordinance 202045, that's the ordinance regarding publication on the website. I appreciate the robust discussion that you all had at the first reading about this topic. And I want to thank you for the thoughts you shared and the questions that you raised about that, so I wanted to reply to some of the comments you made at that first reading. And I really appreciate that you are interested in a variety of ways to reach out, and I think we share the goal of transparency and good public policy. So, I want to agree with Councilmember Cohen about the importance of the local media, and how I think we would all like there to be more news coverage about activities in the city. I think including legal notices in the newspaper is an important way to reach people, in addition to the other ways that you attempt to reach folks. I wanted to answer your questions, Madam Mayor, about the Broomfield Enterprise. It is a newspaper of general circulation, that's because it does publish general news articles, so it is considered an appropriate site for those legal notices. There are 20,000, according to their information, that's published, 20,000 residences that receive the newspaper on a weekly basis. If there are one and a half adults per household, that's 30,000 people that are able to see the newspaper and read the legal notices if they're interested. When you compare that number to the adult population listed in the report you received tonight, the annual comprehensive financial report for 2023, you see that that 30,000 is a significant number in relationship to the 58,200 adults in the city and county of Broomfield, which is also similar to the survey that was done, which indicated 58% of individuals rely on the Broomfield Enterprise for news. And I also agree with Councilmember Leslie that seniors do use the internet, but those of us that are seniors, some individuals might also feel that they get best information from reading a variety of sources, including the Broomfield Enterprise. So, I appreciate that you are looking out for other ways to reach the community, and that may in fact actually cost more money than legal notices. So, my suggestion is you continue to publish in the paper legal notices, and certainly consider adding to that with display ads. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Air Mayor Pro Tem and Council, thank you again for the, the opportunity to speak, Rick Fernandez from Broomfield Heights. I also want to state that I appreciate the, the work that the Charter Committee has done, and gotten to the point where these items have come forward. I want to reiterate something that I mentioned earlier, which is that it's about priorities. One of the things that I think came through from the Charter Committee's perspective was take your time. You're looking at a case now, if these do go to the ballot, that's seven items on a ballot that's already going to be overloaded. There's going to be, I don't know how many different statewide initiatives that are on the ballot in addition to the, the offices that we'll be voting on. And with that, there's a opportunity for you to take your time on a number of these things, and I do agree with Councilmember Leslie, as what he brought up previously, that this is going to be a very heated election. I don't mean that in a pejorative way, it is what it is. And when you have things like term limit increases and term increases on a ballot, expect that there's going to be pushback. So, if there was anything that I would suggest to the council is maybe table those, bring those back, and look at those at a later time. The other question I do have, and if there's an answer that we can get from a staff perspective is, it's going to be a long ballot, several pages. Is this going to, because one of the things that we were told was that this would be a saber in terms of spend by the city in terms of getting everything onto one ballot. This is the tipping point between how many pages per ballot are you looking at, adding seven, potentially eight if another element gets to the ballot. So, I would, if possible, like to hear guidance on that as far as increased costs from a printing perspective for the, the election. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Would anyone else like to be heard on this item? Please come up to the podium.
Good evening, Luana Fletcher Wilcox, and Mayor Pro Tem, I missed you last time, council and staff. I would like to speak on ordinance number 2244, and by combining that, you do affect the Wilcox area neighborhood off of 144th. There is the Toad Overlay District that is in addition to that neighborhood being the A1 that was adopted by Adams County into Broomfield. Therefore, by, there's already restrictions and pluses to those homes down in there that can sell their homes special ways. So, I would like that one to be exempt, if at all possible, for that area, because it already does have a special district applied to it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, I'm not seeing anyone on the phone. We will move on to questions from council. Members should limit themselves to questions during this portion. Are there any questions from council? Councilmember Delgado.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have one kind of pedantic question, if we're being totally honest. So, the rezoned by resolution, I thought I saw the ballot question said, referred to us as a city council. Is that okay, given the fact that we are a city and county, we are looking at our charter as well in the future to remove the term of city? I thought I did see that, yeah, permit city council to approve rezonings, as opposed to just council.
We can change that word, I mean, if we want to. We have been trying to use the term council more than a city council or a city and county council, which doesn't, doesn't really make much sense.
Yeah, yeah, I know there's, it's a awkward.
I think we could do that as a, as a Scrivener's edit, to take out the word city from city council.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to, really, I'm just checking in to make sure that that doesn't meaningfully affect this question, whether it is council or city council.
It, it, it doesn't, and I want to acknowledge that the constitutional amendment that established Broomfield as a city and county referenced the city council as the governing body. So, we do have this sort of, we talk about as a unicorn, Broomfield is a little different from other counties in that way.
All right, that's my only question, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Councilmember Marsh Holson.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to clarify for the public whose comment, Attorney Rogers, changing the ordinance on the rezoning, that doesn't take away any public comment period of time, right?
No, no, and thank you for addressing that question, Councilmember Marsh Holson. There would still need to be an application, the whole process, notification, Broomfield Voice, and a public meeting with public comment on any resolution that would come to council.
And it only applies to single-zone properties, not, like, if we were, we were going to rezone an entire neighborhood for development, that would still require the two zone, two meetings?
That would, that would be a different, a totally different process, this is only a single property, and it would, we were just talking about the last commenter's comment, it really requires an application by the property owner. This does not give the city and county the ability to go unilaterally rezone a property. So, on those A1s, it would take an application from the owner to come in to say, hey, I, I want to change from the A1, and we would have to do that analysis on the A1. The city and county does not have the ability to unilaterally go in and change zoning because of this charter question.
Thank you. That's all, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Mayor Pro Tem, chef.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I just wanted to ask a resident's question. So, in terms of the length of the ballot, this has been, this been a point that has been brought up previously, that it is going to be a long ballot with the numerous ballot measures on there. At this point, with, with all of the ballot measures that we see here, we have a hearing or a conversation about the district attorney's length or term limits, and is this going to expand that ballot further that would increase the printing costs? I hope I got that question correct.
It's really hard to know at this point, because there are other, other, I know Adams County is considering two ballot questions, we're aware that the state is also going through the issue of, of what ballot questions that will have. Will this, I mean, whether to include it will add length, will it add cost? It's, it's too early to opine on that, and what that cost would be.
Okay. I appreciate that answer, and obviously, this is, this is a situation that is in flux. I mean, we just heard from the mayor earlier today that there was conversations about two ballot measures that may not appear on the ballot. So, I know that there's a lot of conversations about what that ballot will look like, but I appreciate the answer, Attorney Rogers.
I guess we'll know by September 1st.
Hopefully.
And Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you. I just have one question, the rest are comments for later. But going back to the publishing the ordinances, and we talked about doing requests for future action so that we could publish our procedures in an ordinance, I guess this is a timing question, because I was hoping that we could, like, you could move that forward and publish, put something in writing that would say that, you know, we will still publish something in the newspaper, and we can still do that ahead of the, the vote, but then it just wouldn't go into effect if, if it did not pass. Is that correct?
No, this, this takes out the mandate from the charter. If council's direction for its own rules and its direction to staff was to continue to publish in the newspaper, we would follow that direction. This just removes that charter mandate. For example, if the enterprise would very unfortunately go out of business, we're not locked into a charter requirement to try to find another newspaper of general circulation.
I guess my question was more along the lines of the procedure for actually bringing, I want to make sure that it's clear that we're not going to completely halt posting anything. We talked about the QR code, we talked about summaries and doing an ordinance, is that something that we would, just to get clarity on that, should I bring forward a request for future action, like, sooner than later, so that we get that in writing, so that the voters know we're serious?
Yes, if you would like to lock that into a process, then yes, I would suggest that you can, it could be a resolution, or it could be something that we add to the, to the code. I do want to say, this, this only is about some publication. Notices on properties for land use, required notices for quasi-judicial hearings that are given to neighbors, that's a very, it's a very different thing.
Okay, thank you. I will work with you on that and bring that forward. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other council member questions? Seeing none?
I'm sorry, can I just follow up real quick? I was trying to get in touch with our clerk about that cost question on ballot. I mean, there, there will be a cost, but there is no way at this stage to determine what that cost could be. I don't want to give any, anybody the impression that it won't add a page, but, but we really don't know at this stage.
All right, well, I appreciate you checking. More to come. Thank you, Ms. Rogers. There being no further questions, the public hearing is closed. We'll now discuss each ballot, ballot ordinance and take a vote one at a time. As a reminder to the public, council is voting to put these questions on the ballot. The voters have the ultimate approval as to whether or not these charter changes are made. Next is council's consideration, proposed ordinance number 2243 on term limits. Will the clerk please read the proposed ordinance by title?
Ordinance number 2243, submitting to a vote of the registered electors of the city and county of Broomfield at the coordinated election to be held on November 5th, 2024, a proposed amendment to Chapter 4, Section 4.3 of the Broomfield Charter to set term limits for elected officials.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance on second and final reading and order published in full? Councilmember Marsh Holson.
De moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Henkel.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Lim.
My reasons for opposing this ballot, ordinance stand from first reading, I feel like the two terms are sufficient for council members, and the third, third term is not necessary, and I think it will encourage new ideas, new participation, if we do not have the third term enacted. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mayor Pro Tem, chef.
Thank you, Mayor. So, during the first reading, I proposed an amendment to ordinance 2243. That amendment unfortunately failed. I voted no on the ordinance on first reading, and I will be voting no on ordinance on the second reading. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you. And similarly, I, I think I sort of disagreed with this in the first time around, and then as we added on the addition of the mayor's term question from two to four, I believe that this will cause kind of a voter frustration, because you don't know if one or both are going to pass, is going to, it's going to cause voter confusion. That came up in the Anthem Ranch forum that we held recently, that was a prominent question there, and just, you know, what happens if both pass, what happens if one passes? So, I believe we should vote no on this one tonight, table the term limits, and then it's, there's no hurry here, we can bring this forward next year and a future year if we so desire. So, I will be voting no, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Leslie.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be voting no on this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Marsh Holson.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, a resident asked a question via email, why three, why not four, why not five, why not six? You know, honestly, I don't support, personally, I don't support term limits at all. I think elections are all, all the term limits that we need. Voters get to decide who gets to represent them, and voters should be able to decide, and that's up to the voters. If they want to keep electing somebody, that's their choice. I serve on a committee nationally that, there's a commissioner that's been there for 30 years, I don't think I would want to do that, but that's, that's his choice, and his voters keep electing him. Three years, three terms rather than five or some, is a political decision. You can look at Denver, they tried to eliminate term limits altogether. It failed, they did three, it passed. So, three, three seemed like a good number from the Charter Review Committee as a kind of compromise number, so I will be supporting this. And ultimately, it's the voters that get to decide. If the voters want more term limits, the voters will decide it. If they don't, they won't. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wen. Thank you, Councilmember Wynn.
Similar to Councilmember Marsh Holson, I agree that the votes should decide, and the voters can decide to have a term limit or not. So that's it, thank you.
Thank you, any other discussion? Seeing no further discussion, we'll move forward to the vote on the ballot ordinance on term limits. Council, please cast your vote electronically. All council members have entered their vote, and the results will be displayed on the screen. That passes six to four. Next is council's consideration of ordinance number 2244 regarding rezones for specific parcels by resolution. Will the clerk please read the proposed ordinance by title?
Ordinance number 2244, submitting to a vote of the registered electors of the city and county of Broomfield at the coordinated election to be held November 5th, 2024. A proposed amendment to Chapter 6, Section 6.4 of the Broomfield Charter to permit rezones and by resolution.
Thank you, is there a motion to approve the ordinance on second and final reading and order published in full? Councilmember Ward.
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second? Councilmember Wynn.
Seconded.
Thank you, is there any discussion? Mayor Protem Shaaf.
Thank you, Mayor, so just wanted to reiterate what I said on first reading. For six years, and most recently this last summer, we've seen developments where there's a zoning change, which each of these, the project is considered along with the first and second reading of the zoning ordinance. The confusion comes when the first and second reading of what is actually being considered, especially when the main focus is on that development application itself. So it doesn't do, it doesn't do the residents or the applicant any good to have that, that confusion exist. And so with only having a resolution tied to that, that rezoning change, it makes that application much more simplified, as well as only one opportunity for public comment, which simplifies or doesn't add to that confusion for both the residents as well as the applicant. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, any other discussion? Seeing no further discussion, we'll move forward to the vote on the ballot ordinance regarding rezones by resolution. Council, please cast your vote electronically. All council members have entered their vote, and the results will be displayed on the screen. That passes unanimously, 10 to 0. Next is council's consideration of proposed ordinance number 2245 on publication of ordinances on the website. Will the clerk please read the proposed ordinance by title?
Ordinance number 2245, submitting to the vote of the registered electors of the city and county of Broomfield at the coordinated election to be held November 5th, 2024. Proposed amendment to Chapter 6, Section 6.9 of the Broomfield Charter permitting publications of ordinances on the Broomfield website.
Thank you, is there a motion to approve the ordinance on second and final reading and order published in full? Councilmember Ward.
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second? Councilmember Henkel.
Second.
Thank you, is there any discussion? Mayor Protem Shaaf.
Thank you, Mayor, so just wanted on this one, so I asked a question on first reading to find out how many people actually read the ordinances that were in the Broomfield enterprise, both printed as well as online. I, I received no emails and no correspondence for how many people do that. But I did receive some feedback of the members asking for public or for meaningful information to be published in the Broomfield enterprise. So there is a strong desire to get more information about what the council is doing, as well as what the city and county are doing, is doing within the community, but not so much feedback for wanting to ensure that those ordinances are still published in the Broomfield enterprise. So I do support this, thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you, any other discussion from council? Seeing no further discussion, we'll move forward to the vote on the ballot ordinance regarding publication on the website. Council, please cast your vote electronically. All council members have entered their vote, and the results will be displayed on the screen. That passes unanimously. Next is council's consideration of proposed ordinance number 2246 regarding changes and updates to Chapter 9, the Personnel Merit System. Will the clerk please read the proposed ordinance by title?
Ordinance number 2246, submitting to a vote of the registered electors of the city and county of Broomfield at the coordinated election to be held on November 5th, 2024. Proposed amendment revising Chapter 9 of the Broomfield Charter Personal Merit System.
Thank you, is there a motion to approve the ordinance on second and final reading and order published in full? Councilmember Marsh Holson.
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second? Councilmember Ward.
Second.
Thank you, is there any discussion? I'm not seeing any discussion, so we'll move forward to the vote on the ballot ordinance with changes and updates to Chapter 9, Personnel Merit Commission, Personnel Merit System. Council, has cast your vote, please electronically. One more, Councilmember Cohen, is yours working? Thank you, all council member, council members have entered their vote, and the results will be displayed on the screen. That passes 10 to 0. Next is council's consideration of proposed ordinance number 2247 regarding changes and updates to Chapter 10, Legal and Judiciary. Will the clerk please read the proposed ordinance by title?
Ordinance number 2247, submitting to a vote of the registered electors of the city and county of Broomfield at the coordinated election to be held on November 5th, 2024. Proposed amendment revising Chapter 10 of the Broomfield Charter, Legal and Judiciary.
Thank you, is there a motion to approve the ordinance on second and final reading and order published in full? Mayor Protem Shaaf.
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second? Councilmember Lim. Thank you, is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, we'll move forward to the vote on the ballot ordinance regarding changes and updates to Chapter 10, Legal and Judiciary. Please cast your vote electronically, council. The results will be displayed on the screen, and that passes 10 to 0. Next is council's consideration of proposed ordinance number 2248 regarding the length of the term of office for future mayors. Will the clerk please read the proposed ordinance by title?
Ordinance number 2248, submitting to a vote of the registered electors of the city and county of Broomfield at the coordinated election to be held on November 5th, 2024. Proposed amendment to Chapter 4, Section 4.3 of the Broomfield Charter that would change the mayor's term of office from two to four years.
Thank you, is there a motion to approve the ordinance on second and final reading and order published in full? Councilmember Ward.
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second? Councilmember Henkel.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing no further discussion, we'll move forward to the vote on the ballot ordinance regarding the length of the mayor's term. Council, please cast your vote electronically. All council members have entered their vote, and the results will be displayed on the screen. That passes unanimously, 10 to 0. All right, thank you all, the next item under Action Items this evening is a resolution relating to the 17th Judicial District DA Term Limits. Council has a copy of the Agenda Memorandum, and I'd like to welcome our district attorney, Brian Mason, to the podium, who will present on this item. Welcome, DA Mason, good to see you.
Nice to see you too, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, Mr. Mayor Protem, members of the city council, city staff. Thank you for inviting me tonight to address the council on this proposed ballot initiative regarding potentially extending term limits for the district attorney. My name is Brian Mason, I am your current district attorney for the 17th Judicial District. State of Colorado has 22 judicial districts, soon to be 23, and Broomfield is part of the 17th Judicial District along with Adams County. In my role as the elected district attorney for this judicial district, I serve a population of nearly 700,000 people. I supervise an office of approximately 240 staff members. That includes 90 attorneys, paralegals, victim advocates, investigators, diversion counselors, and the like. Part of my job includes, with, with that administrative part of the job includes, of course, hiring, terminations, and all other personnel issues. As the district attorney, I'm the chief law enforcement official for this jurisdiction, and I oversee 30,000 criminal cases per year. As the district attorney, I personally file and make the decisions on all homicide cases in this jurisdiction. And of course, I am deeply involved in setting public policy regarding criminal justice matters, both for my own jurisdiction and for the state. I understand, well, let me just say, this proposal would increase the term limits for the district attorney, my, my successors, and for me, should I choose to run for a, for a third term, two, three terms. Why am I doing that? Why am I asking the voters to make this decision? I have worked at the district attorney's office now for nearly 18 years, and I have served now as the elected district attorney for just over three and a half years. It is my belief that this is a job that requires specialized knowledge, experience, wisdom, and that comes with time, and that comes with time in the job. I also have just listed some of my duties as your district attorney. One of my other duties is to try to make this community safe, to keep it safe, and to make the criminal justice system better, and to enact programs and sometimes build institutions that help further that goal. And I'll give you a very specific example. This council heard from me several weeks ago about our efforts at the DA's office to bring a family justice center to Adams and Broomfield counties. As a reminder, a family justice center is a one-stop shop, a brick and mortar building that serves victims of domestic violence, human trafficking, and sexual assault, all in one place. We have been working on this family justice center project since I took office three and a half years ago, and we are at a place now, after some strategic planning, where we're closer than ever to making that dream a reality. Our hope in the next 12 months is to open a temporary family justice center. But building a family justice center is a five-year project, which would extend past a second term for the district attorney. My point in sharing that story is this, that there are certain things that a district attorney does that can't be done in eight years, and I would like the voters to have the opportunity to reelect their district attorney for a third term. Just for some context as well, our neighboring jurisdictions, Boulder, Denver, and Weld, all have three terms for their district attorneys. The state of Colorado is the only state in the country that limits its district attorney's terms at all. I believe that is because the job of the district attorney is a specialized one. So it is my request that this council will refer to the voters a ballot initiative which would allow the voters to decide whether or not the district attorney can serve up to three terms, rather than the two that he or she is currently limited to. And I'm happy to take questions, should you have any.
Thank you very much, DA Mason, we'll now proceed with public comments, starting with in person. If anyone would like to be heard on this item, please come up to the podium, state your name and neighborhood for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and council, John E. Walt from Pinnacle North. I've raised my objections to increasing term limits for an elected official to, to three, four-year terms on multiple occasions. So I'll let those objections stand on their own, and instead focus on the proposed language of this ballot issue. The ballot item text starts with, quote, "For the purposes of advancing public safety and promoting stability," end quote. Using the data published at adamsbroomfieldda.org, it is clear that the DA's office is not advancing public safety. In fact, I think an argument could be made that public safety is regressing when it comes to the prosecution of crime. For example, we all know that during 2020, there was an effort to reduce jail and prison populations because of the risk of COVID spreading. This was done through deferred judgments, personal recognizance bonds, and outright dismissal of cases. Right or wrong, these decisions were made to hopefully reduce the spread of COVID. Now that the immediate fear of COVID has subsided, one would expect that the level of dismissals and deferrals or delayed prosecution would return to pre-COVID levels. What the data shows is that the levels of these alternatives to jail or prison have not gone down since 2020, and in some cases have actually increased. There are more cases by percentage dismissed or deferred now than there were in 2020. The data at the DA's website also shows that the recidivism rate after completing a deferral program is nearly 90% over two years. The goal of a deferral program is to prevent a criminal record and remove the motivations to commit a crime. A 90% failure rate is abysmally bad and certainly not advancing public safety. Again, referring to the data, there are fewer cases being prosecuted now, and those cases are taking longer to resolve, but at the same time, there are more prosecutors in the office than when Brian Mason was first elected. That does not define stability to me, it tells me costs are going up and the results we pay for are going down. It seems like this council will generally support ballot issues to extend term limits, as we've seen with 2243. But it is abundantly clear that the language as written is demonstrably false and should be changed, specifically the opening clause, which is purely a political statement and has no place on a ballot. Since Adams and Broomfield counties have to have the same language on the ballot, I would ask that you fail this issue tonight. There is no practical reason why this issue needs to be on the ballot this year or even the next. Let the DA rework the language to be based in fact and non-political, and have him bring it back in a future year, thank you.
Thank you, would anyone else like to be heard? I don't see any online, so we'll move on to council questions. Members should limit themselves to questions during this portion. Any questions from council? I'm not seeing any, so next is council's consideration of proposed resolution number 2024-75. Will the clerk please read the proposed resolution by title?
Resolution number 2024-75, directing the city and county clerk to place a question on the November 2024 ballot relating to the modification of term limits for the district attorney in the 17th Judicial District.
Thank you, is there a motion to approve the resolution and order it published in full? Councilmember Wynn.
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second? Councilmember Ward.
Second.
Thank you, is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, we'll move forward to the vote on resolution number 2024-75. Council, please cast your vote electronically. All council members have entered their vote, and the results will be displayed on the screen, and that passes nine to one. Thank you very much, thank you, DA Mason. The next item under Action Items this evening is council's consideration on first reading of an ordinance related to city contracted waste collection services. But seeing how we're so close to the eight o'clock recess, I think we should just take it now and come back at eight. So it's 7:52, we'll be back at 8:02, thank you. So it's seven fifty-two. We'll be back at eight oh two. Thank you. Welcome back, everyone. All right, we're going to go ahead and get started with part two of the meeting. We left off under ordinance number 2242, amending sections of Title VIII, Chapter Four of the Brimfield Municipal Code to Implement City Contracted Waste Collection Services First Reading. Council has a copy of the agenda memorandum, which I'll ask our staff to summarize.
Thank you, Mayor, and Ken Rutt, Director of Public Works. And I'm not sure if Allison is presenting or not. Is she? Yes, Ms. Harvey? Who's the Deputy Director of Public Works and has really shepherded this through for two and a half years now. I think Mr. Rutt will kick it off, and Ms. Harvey will walk us through the item. Mr. Rutt?
Can't tell up here. There we go. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and Council, Ken Rutt, Director of Public Works. We're pleased to be here tonight to present the Proposed Ordinance 2242 for the City Contracted Waste Collection Services. As Ms. Hoffman has indicated, Allison Harvey has been our point person for this project, and she will be taking you through the presentation tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rutt.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members. Next slide, please, Curtis. Thanks. Just a brief overview of where we're heading. We're going to try to keep it short for you tonight with such a long agenda. We'll talk a little bit about the purpose of the ordinance in front of you and review a bit about the zero-waste goals and progress we're making towards them. A little refresher for where we're at with that. Walk through what the proposed ordinance does and doesn't do, and then have a short description of the city contracted residential waste collection services that the ordinance would facilitate. And then we'll end with talking about what happens from here and with the process and timeline. Slide, please. So the purpose of the ordinance before you tonight is to give a flexible policy framework to allow the city to contract for residential waste collection services. And that could look a number of different ways. The ordinance establishes legal authority for Brimfield to contract directly with a hauler based on council policy direction. And it allows, importantly, it allows for contracting services, but it does not require or obligate the city. Approving this ordinance tonight does not enter us into any obligation in terms of a contract. Slide, please. As a quick reminder, in the Brimfield Community Survey in 2023, which is a statistically valid sample size of about fourteen hundred residents, in that survey, we asked residents for their views about city contracted waste recycling and composting. Eighty percent of survey respondents said that they would support the city to contract for residential waste services through a competitive bidding process if it included curbside recycling pickup and in the cost of trash pickup. There was a bit less support for inclusion of HOAs and a bit less support than that for inclusion of composting, but still fairly good community support for the initiative in general. Slide. In 2020, council approved goals for Brimfield to increase our diversion rate. And for those who aren't familiar, that means essentially our recycling and composting, increase our diversion rate to fifty percent by 2025 and as close to we can get is a hundred percent by 2035. And that really is aimed at reducing the tons that we're sending to the landfill each year from this community. As you can see on the left, our diversion rate is, it's pretty much stalled, so action is required to move the needle towards those goals. Moving to a city contracted system in the residential sector is a key strategy identified in the Zero Waste Plan for progressing towards these goals. Slide. After a lot of work together last year, council directed staff to design a residential waste collection program formerly called Universal Collection and slightly rebranded to try to make it more clear what we were talking about. Because when you Google "universal collection," all kinds of things come up, including what you do with your old light bulbs. And we wanted it to be very clear to residents exactly what we were talking about, which is how we ended up with the long, boring name, which I will note our communication staff said could happen. I mean, they advised, they advised against the switch, but we're here because I asked to do it. So we were directed to present a residential waste diversion program to maximize waste diversion in alignment with the Zero Waste Plan. And so there were three key elements to doing this in a citywide contract, because you can, of course, contract for trash services as a city, but to do it in a way that maximizes waste diversion, it needs three key elements, which we've discussed together and I've talked about from this podium. The first is that you provide recycling at no additional cost. So people pay for their trash and they get recycling access included. They don't have to search it out separately. They don't have to pay more. It's just you have the recycling cart, you get the recycling cart, you have access. The second is to charge a fee to households that want to opt out of the program. Under state law, as a reminder, we can't, you know, people have to be allowed to opt out. That's state law. But requiring those individuals to pay a fee ensures sufficient participation rates if the fee is set high enough, which is usually equivalent to the small cart service in a program like this. And opt-out fees set at that level usually garner about ninety-five to ninety-seven percent participation rates in neighboring communities. The opt-out fee is not designed to generate revenue. It's not intended that way and typically doesn't generate a lot of revenue. It's not for making money. It's just for covering some administrative costs. And really, its main purpose is to incentivize people to participate, to reach waste diversion goals. The third main tool for maximizing waste diversion in the city contract is to use volume-based pricing, also called pay-as-you throw. This is where the hauler sets the price for the small cart service. And then the medium and large cart service is priced at some multiplier above that small cart, typically two to three times what the small cart costs. This secures an advantageous price for choosing the small cart and incentivizes people to recycle more. And it does also mean that households that choose or need a large cart are paying more for those than they might under another pricing situation. Slide. This ordinance does six main things. One, it allows the city to contract for residential waste services for residents of single-family homes and multifamily dwellings that have seven or fewer units. And the catchment area for that is dictated by state law. We're not allowed to contract for businesses or for larger multifamily complexes. The ordinance also allows the city to charge residents a minimum service fee or opt-out fee if they do not wish to participate for the reasons just described. It requires non-exempt residents to separate recyclable materials from trash. Essentially, this means any households that are participating in the city contracted services have to separate their trash and recyclable materials in the receptacles provided by the contracted hauler. This ordinance exempts HOAs that contract for trash and recycling services without requiring them to pay a minimum service or opt-out fee. It does not prevent HOAs from joining the city contract should they wish to do that. The ordinance only takes effect if council approves a contract. Working through that, it's been a little bit hard to absorb process-wise, but we have, I'll come back to the timeline for the process, but really, we wanted everyone to understand that the ordinance can pass. And then if council does not approve a contract with a hauler in the next year, the ordinance won't take effect. It will just be, I don't know what the legal term for that is, but it will go away. It will be void. And finally, this ordinance does not require haulers other than the city contracted hauler to use the volume-based pricing or pay-as-you-throw approach. Slide, please. This map shows we have about eight thousand six hundred residential parcels outside HOAs. So these are the properties that would be required to join the program or choose to pay the fee to opt out. They're shown in salmon, terracotta, brown. I don't know what you want to call that color, depending on where you are in relation to the screen. But that's just to give you an idea of the coverage of the program. Slide. Last night, we talked about this at the ACES meeting, the Advisory Committee for Environmental Sustainability for Brimfield, for any of you who don't know that. ACES recommended that city council approve the ordinance to establish the legal and policy framework for city contracted residential waste collection services. And that on the screen is the exact language of their motion that they passed unanimously last night. And you don't have the slide in your pockets because it just happened last night. Slide. So we've talked about the ordinance and what it does and what it doesn't do. And we thought it would be good to take a little refresher on what is the program and the contract that the ordinance enables so that you have a full understanding of what we're doing here tonight. While council isn't voting on the contract, consideration of the ordinance does involve some, you know, the concept of the program needs to be understood. So let's spend a few minutes talking about that. Staff are in the final stages of contract negotiations with the hauler that was selected through the competitive bidding process. We have not provided any information about that contract tonight because policy decisions made by council tonight could affect contract provisions and require us to negotiate some things. We didn't want to put out a lot of information that we would have to change in a few days. The plan is, if this ordinance passes tonight, that we will make that information available to the public about the contract as soon as possible and well ahead of the second reading. No, I lost my place in my notes. Yes, okay. So generally, the city contracted residential waste collection program will provide service for single-family homes and multifamily dwellings with seven or fewer units outside of HOAs and for any HOAs that opt in if they're not already providing their services or even if they do have a contract and they want to change to the city contract, they can. This means that there will still be competition among haulers in the commercial sector to win contracts with businesses and with large multifamily complexes. So it does not reduce the open market. It just provides a single contracted hauler in the residential sector for the non-HOA portion of that sector. The program will include choice of trash cart size, small, medium, large. The program will include choice of trash cart size, small, medium, large is what's typical. Volume-based pricing, as I just went over, where the price is tied to the size of a trash cart that a customer selects. And the any additional services such as recycling or composting or whatnot are included in that price of the trash cart. Recycling services will be included at no additional cost. And our our composting options will be confirmed when we present the contract. And then again, households can opt out by paying a minimum service fee. And we estimate that the diversion impact of this contract and this this program will be about two to four percent, depending on how many HOAs choose to opt in. We can reach more diversion impact with a sustained and ongoing outreach and education accompanying this, which is our intent and our plan. And we can, I don't have the number in front of me of exactly how many more percentage points, but we know from other communities and from research that it's more effective to have the contract alongside ongoing education and outreach. Slide, thanks Curtis. So anticipating the contract coming before council in September, even though I did just say a couple of slides ago, we're not talking specifically about that contract. The financial considerations related to this ordinance are linked with the contract. There aren't a lot of the financial considerations for the ordinance itself, but if we move on to the phase of approving the contract, we will need to staff up to help implement that. At this time, we estimate that three additional FTE will be needed to support program implementation. And that's in line what we for, in line with what we forecasted at the April two thousand and twenty-three study session. One FTE is needed to support billing for the monthly opt-out fee, having to do with the need to handle it manually due to limitations with our current financial platforms and the other obligations of that team at the moment. We've also are putting, we are forecasting a request for two recycling technicians who are needed to support implementing the the contract while also continuing implementation of the Zero Waste Plan in general and all of our waste diversion-related initiatives. Our current waste and recycling coordinator and our current recycling tech are full-time busy on all the other things that we do right now. They're, they run spring cleanup and household hazardous waste events, paper shredding. There's probably things that I'm missing there. They staff the recycling center and oversee that. And we estimate that up to seventy-five percent of the waste and recycling coordinator's time will be spent managing implementation of a contract, having to do with coordinating with the hauler on on things related to road closures and snow removal events, addressing contamination issues, reviewing reporting and assessing performance. And that about seventy-five percent and ninety percent of the time of our recycling tech will be spent fielding customer concerns, residents' questions, concerns, et cetera. We already get a considerable volume of calls from people who are unhappy with their trash collection services, even though we have nothing to do with them at the moment. So we anticipate that to increase. And we know from our neighboring cities who have implemented contracts and programs like this that it puts a considerable burden on staff, even when there's excellent customer service from the hauler. We've talked with our sister cities and depending on the size, those who are smaller are talking about point five to one FTE being added. Larger cities are adding two to four. We're walking a middle line in terms of what we think will be needed. We just didn't want to undercommunicate the need and then end up not able to serve our residents. And importantly, existing staff doesn't have the capacity to absorb the expected workload and carry out implementing other aspects of the Zero Waste Plan. Okay, slide. The expected benefits coming from this ordinance and the associated contract are, number one, to increase waste diversion for Brimfields. Two, to provide more residents with the opportunity to recycle and have access to more affordable recycling, especially especially for residents outside of HOAs. To hold the preferred hauler accountable for customer service, which is really hard to do as an individual customer with a single contract. To provide more transparent and consisting consistent pricing. There's not consistency from HOA to HOA, there's not consistency from neighbor to neighbor outside of HOAs. And if you've ever tried to call around and and find out from a website what you might have to pay with a hauler, you'll understand that it's, they have a lot of power on their side and and reasons for that their rates are different. But this approach can help smooth some of that out. Residents who produce less trash and recycle more could see lower costs for service, depending on what they're paying now, of course. And it will reduce the number of trash trucks on the road and associated traffic impacts. But that is not the primary purpose of the program. Okay, last slide. What happens from here? So tonight's matter of business is to update the Brimfield Municipal Code to allow a potential contract with the hauler. If ordinance twenty-two forty-two is not approved tonight, the program does not move forward. And council can provide alternate direction to staff to which of the zero-waste initiatives would should be pursued next and what alternate course of actions should be pursued. If the ordinance is approved at first reading tonight, a second reading will be September tenth. And the contract will be brought forward at that same time. We have second reading of the ordinance and then the next agenda item will be consideration of the contract. And in the meantime, we will finalize the contract with the hauler and publicize the information about what services are included and what the rates will be as soon as we can do that. And then if both the contract is approved, if the ordinance is approved at second reading and the contract is approved September tenth, then we get very busy preparing for a successful rollout with services beginning in April two thousand and twenty-five. That's the end of my presentation.
Thank you very much. We're going to proceed with public comments. So we have people signed up, but though obviously maybe some other folks that wanna to speak as well. The folks I have signed up, the first six are Dave Walden, if y'all wanna line up by the podium, Janet Sund, Bill Cruthers, Matthew Brown, John Ewalt, and Roxy Jewell. Let's start with Dave.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager, Staff, and fellow taxpaying citizens. As a resident of Brimfield for the past thirty years, I have watched costs go up, my taxes to pay for them. And I think I'm on my third hauler, as you call them. The first two didn't do the job that I thought they ought to be doing. So I fired him. And the last one that I've been on, I've been on for quite some time. I'm very pleased with the service that he provides. And having said that, in the atmosphere that now has arisen in our country, I believe if you did a poll, you would find that most of the fellow citizens that are here talking on this issue would prefer that you leave their trash collection competitive as it currently exists. Each of us has the power to hire and fire them for whatever reason we deem appropriate. And as best I can tell from the limited information I have on this ordinance, at a minimum, I am going to be compelled to be a part of it and be charged a fee if I want to extricate myself from it. The bottom line being, I sense, as most of the people in this room would likely sense, that the cost and even the convenience of dealing with an independent contractor by terms mutually agreed upon is preferable to what is planning to be done on our behalf. So I would ask and urge that you not adopt this and leave me to continue perhaps for another five, ten years to negotiate with my own hauler on terms that he and I find agreeable, acceptable, and in the American spirit of competitive enterprise, satisfying and productive. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Janet Sund.
Hi. I I agree totally with him. We we all should get choice. I just feel like our choices are constantly being taken away from us. We're being dictated to on so many different levels, and this is just another example. We had, I remember being a little four and six-year-old and seven-year-old little girl on Flintway. And we had trash service provided by the city of Brimfield. And they didn't do such a great job. It was noisy because they were going down the streets to every house. And it just didn't last. We we got rid of it. One time, now we're coming back to doing it again. Paying an opt-out fee for a service I don't want is is ridiculous. You're forcing us to do that. You're putting people, there are six commercial haulers listed on the website for Brimfield, approved haulers. If you only select one of them, you're putting them at potential of losing employees that they have to lay off because they don't have enough work. I don't think that's right. The idea that these, oh, the city paying two hundred and five thousand dollars for staff to manage this account, that money is coming out of our taxes. That's that's a waste of money. We could manage our own accounts. And as far as the road problems, I really do not understand why people have problems with road road issues from trash haulers. Trash haulers have been around since the nineteen fifties. Trash pickup has been around since the eighteen hundreds. The trash haulers have been around for a long time. The, there are significant specifications for for roads. There's C dot requirements, there's, what is it, the A A S A something? The asphalt compliance people, there's the specifications for all kinds of building products that are related to roads. There's compaction testing. There's all these requirements, and I don't understand why they say that these these trash haulers are the problems with the repairs on the roads. It just doesn't make sense unless they're not being installed correctly. They're not doing their compaction tests or they're doing they're doing tearouts of sewers.
Ms. Sund, your time has expired.
Okay, thank you.
Next is Mr. Cruthers, or I guess we're too young. Okay. Thank you, Curtis. All right, next is Mr. Cruthers.
Bill Cruthers, one more time. I have a few things on this. I like the ability to pick the day I get my trash picked up. If I decide that this firm only wants to pick it up on Monday and I don't want it picked up on Monday, I don't use that firm. I go with a different firm. I'm very happy with the the schedule I have now. I don't understand the charge for the oversized containers. My company doesn't charge me if I put one one bag in there or if I put, if I fill the whole thing up, it's the same price. So I don't understand what advantage that's going to be other than forcing me to use smaller and smaller containers, which I don't think I should have to. I'd like, I have a couple of questions. I don't really know who to ask. Why are HOAs exempt for one reason? I don't understand that. How often would this contract be reviewed? Is it a yearly contract? Is it, you know, two years, five years? What is it? I don't understand why they say we're, if we're taking away work from full-time employees that we have currently, why do we need to hire more people if we're gonna have less work for those people to do? Those people should just be absorbed into that. We don't need extra headcount. And also, it sounds like we're not really gonna know what the actual cost of this is gonna be to us until after it's too late to to really know. It's gonna already be approved before we even know how much we're gonna pay. I wanna know now, what's it gonna cost me? If we go to a single payer, you guys obviously have already approved someone. Someone's waiting in the wings to get started. They should have that information already. I don't want to wait six months to find out that, oh my God, my trash went up instead of down. Hey, I wanna make sure that if we get a new, that if I get a new container, there's no charge to me. I'll get rid of my, I'll take the responsibility to get rid of my containers that I have. But I don't want any responsibility to have to pay for the new one. And I guess the last thing is, sorry, I think I got a couple of seconds left. Uh, maybe that's it. So, oh, the last thing is, I would expect a guarantee from the company that we hire that they will not do any price increases at least for twelve months. I don't want them coming in here and three months from now going, oh, we're gonna jack it up again. Sorry, we're gonna jack it up again. And I know that'll happen if we don't have it in the contract. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cruthers. We'll get your questions answered. Mr. Brown?
Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, city staff, thank you. My name is Matthew Brown. I'm in the Outlook neighborhood. I've been a resident of Brimfield for eight years and I intend to live here as long as I really personally can. And the sustainability of our community is at the forefront of my mind. I've had a lot of experience living in other parts of the world and other parts of the country where there is contracted waste services. I've frankly been very satisfied with what it provides. I think the benefits to our community have been enumerated pretty well. The reduction in noise, the reduction in road wear, the increase of waste diversion are all pros in my mind that increase the sustainability of our community. I would comment that the two to four percent increase in diversion, I find that to be a little low. Why not higher? What 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 could we do to increase the waste diversion? In terms of a market-based solution, I think it's totally appropriate for an efficient way of doing things for a lot of different avenues. In the case of residential waste collection, we have elasticity of demand. The collective ability to negotiate those contracts, have an effective price, have a greater level of accountability from our haulers, I view that as a pro as well. I would say lastly, the points of emphasis that I care about as a potential consumer of this service, I really value the customer service of a waste hauler. I hope that that is a factor of our valuation and our contracts. And I do really value the ability to do curbside composting, if that can be a consideration as well in any future contracts. Thank you for putting this forward and I relinquish the rest of my time.
Thank you very much.
Good evening again, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Council and Executive Staff, John Ewalt, Pinnacle North. To be clear, a contract with a hauler already exists. Why do we keep stating that this ordinance does not require or obligate council to enter into a contract? This seems all too reminiscent of, we need to pass it so you can read it. How little respect do you, council and staff, have for the citizens of Brimfield? It's shameful that you have even proposed voting on this issue without sharing any details of the contract with the hauler. There does not seem to be a legal reason why you can't share the contract before this ordinance passes or you would not be able to share it prior to second reading. If the contract is not finalized and that is not, and that is why it's not being shared, then why bring this issue forward now? If this passes tonight, we, the public, are gonna have If this passes tonight, we, the public, are gonna have a single comment period and an unknown timeline to review the contract, to understand its impact it's gonna have on our budgets, and to see if Broomfield can demonstrate that it is capable of managing this utility in a fiscal responsible way. Everything leading up to this point has said, has says, said, pay as you throw, and universal hauler is going to be a significant increase to what we currently pay for private hauler of this, and on the same magnitude as our upcoming water and sewer rate increases. Can we look forward to the same type of management and rate increases with universal waste hauling as we are going to be stuck with for water and sewer? Do you really think it is reasonable to move this issue forward without first sharing details of the contract? Please table the vote of this issue until a contract, or at least a preliminary contract, has been made available for the public to review. Any vote on this issue tonight before costs and timelines are shared with the public is a large slap in the face to the public you are saying you're representing. And since I do have a little time left, I'm interested in how the, the 2%, 2 to 4% waste diversion is being valued, because to me, clearly, the most tangible and meaningful benefit of this ordinance, or, or any universal hauler, would be a reduction in road damage and the emissions, the emissions reduction. And then I also would like to know, how hard is it to set up an HOA, and can it be a single resident only? Thank you.
Thank you. Roxy Jewell?
Roxy Jewell Lockmore. I've spoke many a times on this topic. It was, I've always asked, how many people are gonna be affected? So tonight they're saying around 8,000 people, 8,000 homes, I should say. What is that, 1/10th of Broomfield? So you're gonna pick 1/10th of the taxpayers to have to pay more money? And if we decide we don't want it, then you're gonna charge us anyway? All you want is money? We should not have to pay for employees that are not needed. You can find people to push buttons and put input into the computers without having to get two or three more people. This is ridiculous. You can get a high school kid for doing this. And look at the price on some of this for the employees that you're gonna have. You guys are asking for more money yourself. You guys want more than what even this lower employee's gonna get. So all you want is money. You're not thinking of the taxpayers, and you're not thinking of us at home. If I wanted to be in an HOA, I would have bought into an HOA. So, and the other thing is, there's probably only, I don't know, what, three of you that don't live in an HOA or, or a large complex that this is not going to affect? So you're making judgments on some of the poor people, so that means you're gonna have to give more money to the nonprofits again so that those poor people can have their trash hauled away. Just give, give, give. That's all you do, and take, take, take.
Thank you. So we've had six speakers in person, and we do have six more signed up already. So the next people who are gonna speak in person is Chris Hammerschmidt.
So I signed up. But you don't have, well, you don't know who I am, so how would you know?
I have a list of who's signed up. So Chris Hammerschmidt, Luanne Fletcher, Robin Cunningham.
That's me. So I go back to?
Yes. And, but first, we're going to the people on the phone. Well, I, I told you what was gonna happen at the beginning of the meeting, that we did have a sign up. So hold that thought, Ms. Hammerschmidt. We're gonna go to the people, we have four people on the phone, so we're gonna go to Cindy now. You're live, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Cindy David, Ward 5, Wilcox. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and council members, I'm a 35-year resident, year resident of Broomfield, and we have never had a trash hauler service. We have recycled, we have composted, we do not have a lot of trash in this house because we do our own cooking. We don't order out, take out, and delivery and all that kind of stuff. And so we typically have one small kitchen trash bag that goes out on a weekly basis. My husband works at job sites and can take it, to leave it at dumpsters and job sites, or on occasion, we have put it in our neighbor's trash can when we really need to. So I have not had to pay for trash service for 35 years. I should not have to pay for, I mean, I'm, I'm exactly what you're looking for, right? I recycle, I compost, I've been doing it right all these years, and now I'm gonna have to pay an opt-out fee for whatever minimal service. Why? Why should I have to pay, pay an opt-out fee if I'm not using the service? I'm in a semi-rural community, I don't use sewer service, I don't, I don't pay an opt-out fee to not use the city sewer services, so it seems very unfair that if you're not using the service, you should have to opt out. I do like the idea of maybe I'll create a single home HOA and see if that would allow me to opt out since I meet all of your requirements. I am very concerned about anything that adds cost right now on the general fund side. As far as three full-time employees, based on my, the water increases, the cost of water that I've been dealing with this year, and the pending news of just how bad it's gonna get over the next four years, I think we need to take a stop. Somebody said at the open comments at the beginning, we need to stop anything that is gonna increase costs for the city and county of Broomfield until we figure this water situation out. This is pants-on-fire time. My, my property taxes have gone up 40%. My grocery bill has gone up 30 to 40%. I can run down the list of all the costs that have gone up, and now I'm gonna have to pay an opt-out fee for a service that I do not wish to use. So I'm asking you to please table this, stop this. Let's get serious about our streets. Let's get serious about our water and sewer problems, and let's stop all these extra programs. Until we have our house in order, we cannot take on additional services. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. David. So our next six in-person speakers are Chris Hammerschmidt, Luanne Fletcher, Robin Cunningham, James Engelbret, Dave Usher, and Sarah Braun.
So Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, I am asking you not to support this contracted residential waste services program. James Marshall, or Councilmember Marsh Holson wrote me a letter today, and I want to address just one of his items, because I don't have enough time to address them all. So the one I want to address is road damage. He said, in his response back to me, "A full trash truck is the equivalent of 1,250, yeah, 1,250 cars on the road with an average of four different trash companies on each residential street each week. The road damage adds significant cost to Broomfield taxpayers and added wear and tear." Fort Collins did a study, they are rolling out their single, single hauler program this fall, that switching to a single hauler will save them over $600,000 per year in reduced road damage. So being the good scientist that I am, I went back and I looked at all of these claims. So I didn't find the Fort Collins study. That should be included in the packet that we as citizens review, so we understand where your numbers are coming from. A full trash truck costs about, or weighs about 64,000 pounds. That's only 51 times the weight of a car. And in terms of saving them $600,000 per year, I don't know where that number came from. So I did this research. Like I said, a trash truck costs 64,000 pounds, and if we consider that, it goes on, one trash trunk, truck travels the road one day a week, which is what happens in my neighborhood. A passenger car or truck weighs 4,300 pounds. Let's say in my neighborhood, 50 cars go out to work, 50 cars come back. That's 100 cars a day. So that is 430 pound, 430,000 pounds on the road. An EV weighs approximately 50, 5,300 pounds. It's about 1,000 times more than a car. If there's 10 of those in my neighborhood, five go in, five go out, that's 53,000 pounds. That's almost a trash truck. A delivery truck like Amazon or whatever, partially loaded, is about 16,000 pounds. I have three of those, maybe more, come through my neighborhood per day. That's 48,000 pounds. A USPS truck weighs 8,500 pounds. One of those goes through my neighborhood a day. That's 8,500 pounds for a total of 539,501 pounds wear and tear on the roads. That's eight trash trucks. So fixing the roads is where I want my tax money spent, because I understand that weather, which is the predominant way that wear and tear occurs on roads, because we live in a freeze and thaw atmosphere here, I want those added, I want to pay for those roads. I don't want to pay for your single hauler trash. I'm being forced to do something that I don't want to.
Thank you. Luanne Fletcher, I think, is not here. So go ahead, Ms. Cunningham.
So I'm Robin Cunningham. I live in Aspen Creek. Aspen Creek is an HOA. It doesn't matter to me personally, but it does matter. Oh, and also, I recycle, I use trash, and I compost. So what bothers me is that the city council wants to spend $205,000 for staff to supplement this trash hauling service. It also bothers me that people that live in single-family homes that don't live in an HOA are gonna be forced to use this trash. I don't have to. I'm clear. And so I think you should really think about the cost for people that aren't in HOAs that don't have a choice. I spent a lot of time being here this evening just to, to, to give my opinion on this. I was educated with other things that were on the agenda, so I appreciate that very much. But I think you need to listen to the constituents of your community, that they don't need another expense. Again, my taxes went up 40%. Water may go up 50%. Trash is gonna go up for a number of people, and I think you need to think about the people who live in Broomfield that just are up to here with these additional expenses. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is James Engelbret.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, staff, fellow citizens. I'm here to tell you a bit of a story. I moved into Broomfield, and this was the first issue that caught my attention, maybe two years ago, year and a half ago. I would ask you, our elected officials, to consider principle. I appreciated Councilman Hosen's comment that was principles based on term limits. The principles that struck me back when I first heard of this initiative were, huh, basic economic principles, human nature, natural law says monopoly is a power that should be used very carefully. This, you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, are taking on the decision to create a monopoly under your control and power. That needs to be approached very carefully, as I said. The obvious needs for monopoly, electric, gas, those are obvious. Where we definitely, as citizens, need government, government oversight. Water, which we've heard a lot about tonight, and I was in the meeting where the problems were presented. Taking control and power also has responsibility. And as we see New York City, you may have read the article, that they've discovered trash cans now in New York City. I spent time in New York City, and they have a controlled, government-controlled monopoly over their trash systems. A disaster, as everybody who's ever visited that city knows. Not that our circumstance would be like theirs, but why not elect freedom over force? As others have stated eloquently, this is a force, opt-out fees for a portion of the population, where for some, some unfathomable reason, HOAs are excluded. It screams of force. I urge you to stand down, to go and take care of the things that need taking care of. Don't fix something that does not need fixing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Dave Usher.
Good evening again, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council. This kind of goes back to what I said the first time around. Let's stop, reset, quit getting involved with things we don't need to. I spent 30 years working for the government, county job, two different counties, five of those were as a project manager, contracts manager. And let me tell you, they're the worst people to manage money, and that's first thing. Having a government oversee things like this is not efficient, and it's a waste of our taxpayer money being charged for, you know, FTEs that, you know, we don't need in the first place. And I'm a little confused on, I heard it, it was by state law, you can't mandate it. Well, then how can you turn around and, you know, charge somebody a fee if they opt out, if the state says you don't have to do it? So I think there's a little, I mean, I'm not a lawyer, but it seems like a little conflict right there. Y'all have a chance to have a legacy here, all of you. I know not all the problems of this county and city, or the city, are on you, but you're the ones that need to fix it. And you can either, you know, show the people that you care, and just start focusing on what's needed to be done, and quit, you know, just getting sidetracked with all things like this. This is something that doesn't even need to be addressed. Or we won't need to worry about term limits, because people are gonna get fed up, and you'll all get voted out eventually. So, you know, I'm not trying to sit up and bicker, but, you know, this is something that totally does not need to even be addressed at this time. We have enough problems, especially talking about roads and things like that. You know, I don't know how this applies, but on my street, the roads are horrible, and the curbs are all torn up. And the poor lady, my neighbor, is a widow, and she was told, well, it's your responsibility. Well, she didn't install those curbs. I, I, the work that gets done around this city is horrible. You know, the, the, the quality of work, the, the job. A city truck ran over part of our yard and crushed the yard. They sent somebody out, did a really, I'm not even gonna say kind of job, I had to go out and fix it myself, because I got tired of dealing with it. Let's focus on what's important, and just get rid of this nonsense. Let people make their own choice, not have government overreach or city overreach. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Sarah Braun.
Hello. I am on the Board of Directors for my HOA in the Outlook, and we have been following this initiative closely over the last couple of years, and really expecting these forthcoming changes. So we were surprised by the final language that now excludes HOAs and will allow us to continue with our existing service. However, I will say, we've talked about it, and if the price is competitive with our existing vendor, we'll definitely consider whether it makes sense to switch to Broomfield's contracted residential waste services. I am also an alternate member of the Advisory Council, or Advisory Committee on Environmental Sustainability, which is a group that I chose to participate in because I care about the longevity of Broomfield and sustaining our high quality of life here. So I want to, you know, thank the council. I appreciate you being responsive to the community's wishes that we saw in the survey data that was shared by Allison Harvey earlier, which showed an overwhelming majority of residents' support moving forward in this area. So given the charge that the ACES group had from residents, I would say that the proposed ordinance attempts to be a flexible solution that will balance residents' requests while preserving choice. Moving forward is necessary to make progress on the sustainability goals that have been reviewed and approved, and moving towards reducing pollution, increasing recycling in our community. Further, given how far we still are from our diversion goals in 2025 and beyond, I would encourage you all to look ahead and prioritize additional measures that will that will reduce the amount of waste from Broomfield that is going to landfills today. Thank you.
Thank you. So now I'm going to go to our folks on the phone who have been waiting. We're going to go to Sean next. Sean? You're on. You have three minutes.
Good night. Okay, thanks. Good night, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and esteemed council members. I trust everyone is doing well. I've listened to all the comments so far and appreciate the opportunity to speak today. My name is Sean McKenzie. I serve as the Chair of the ACES Group. I'm also a postgraduate student at the University of Cambridge Institute of Sustainability and work as a sustainability consultant, essentially advising multinational companies and executives with their net zero strategies. So have been in this space for quite a while and have some expertise. And today I just wanted to advocate for the adoption of this ordinance. Indubitably, it is a complex, and based on the comments I've heard, you know, affects residents in different ways. But I think that, as was stated earlier, this ordinance is, in my mind, the most impactful initiative that the city has undertaken over the past three years. The data has shown that waste has hovered around twenty, twenty-two percent or so. And given the goal for even next year and in coming future years, I think that this is one that will actually move the lever and sort of will be instrumental in achieving that target. I think there are a couple of points quickly, right? Like this is, you have the tiering, the pricing based on waste volume. So there's an incentivization for residents, produce less waste. There's the environmental benefits as well in terms of vehicles on the streets, emissions, environmental justice, et cetera. There's also the economic play here, right? So getting economies of scale throughout the city and getting efficiency gains throughout the routes and such. And then also from a regulatory perspective, allows for more monitoring and compliance and ensuring that they are upholding the standards, which we need them to. So in essence, I think that, given the complexity of the situation at hand, this is one of the most meaningful initiatives that I've seen for the city. And appreciate you all, and I'm proud to be in Broomfield. And thank you all for doing well. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We're going to go back to our in-person guests, Ms. W elders.
My name is Denise Welder. I'm a little short for this. It's my first time speaking. I live in Country Vista, and I don't like having to be forced to do anything. I'm in Ward One down here. And I would like you to not do this and to let me be able to do whatever I want with my trash. My son-in-law owns Recycling Connections on One Hundred and Fourth. He also owns a recycling company in Nebraska. And I would like you to stop, if you would. And I also would like you to work on the tables that we want in our pirate park. And so if you could do that instead of this, that would be great. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and council and staff. My name is Heather Stidham. I'm in Ward Five in McKay. But I've been in Broomfield since nineteen seventy-three, when my parents moved here right after I was born. So I lived in Ward One on Burl Way. And my concern here is talking about eight thousand homes outside of these HOAs. Most of those homes, knowing Broomfield, those are your lower-priced homes, your lower-income residents. And this really, to me, seems like it's going to end up discriminating against them and putting a financial burden that they can't bear. Again, as many other people have already mentioned, the rising costs in water and taxes and groceries, et cetera. In addition, it would also put a larger burden on a larger family. So you're going to, if you have a family of, you know, five people and you are going to have a little bit more waste, and so is that going to be more cost to them? So that's my concern, is the overall impact and the burden will fall on those who are most unable to bear that burden. And that feels like it's discrimination, and that's my biggest concern. The other thing is, at that point, what do those people do? Is that going to force people to start throwing trash away, maybe in open spaces, things like that, because their receptacles aren't big enough? So that could also be a big detriment to the community. Not to mention the additional, the cost of three full-time employees that we've already talked about. That additional cost just can't be afforded right now. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, staff, council, Rick Fernandez from Broomfield Heights. Couple of comments on this. Looking at the proposal, I think I can get everything that was on the suggested plan. I can do it myself, or I can find a vendor to provide that to me. And I can change it without paying an opt-out fee. It's a choice I have. In fact, I did that earlier this year, made a choice and changed my provider. Also finding it interesting that commercial and HOA entities have the ability to negotiate, but I don't know. Unless I do the opt-out fee, which is interesting. There was a comment brought up related to not knowing what the contract has in it. There's one thing that I think we'd like to know about the contract. What are the KPIs that basically indicate whether or not this program is successful or not? At what point does the city make a decision to stop? Or is that even an option? I'm not talking about changing a provider. I'm talking about stopping the program altogether in the future. And the last thing I'd like to bring up, and I'm afraid to do it, but I will. I'm not sure if the survey that's been basically held up as the way to indicate this, if the survey question actually indicated if the opt-out fee was included in the question, what the response would have been to that question to the public. So we seem to be happy here as far as putting ballot measures on in front of the voters. Why not put another ballot measure, since we like to seem to be doing that these days, in front of the voters, to ask if they would approve such a program with proper language, including opt-out fees as to whether or not the citizens of Broomfield want a universal trash program or not? I look at this as a tax. I don't want to, I'm not a lawyer, and I'm not going to claim that I am. Tabor says that taxes should be put to a vote of the people. And I know there's probably some nuance in their tax versus fee. I get it. But if you really want a clear indicator whether or not this is something that the citizens of Broomfield want, be honest about what you're actually putting out there, including the opt-out fee, and ask the question again. Thanks.
Thank you. So we have two folks on the line. So we're going to go to our last two callers. First is Brandon. Brandon, you have three minutes.
This is Brandon Mock, and I live in the Willow Run neighborhood of Broomfield. I'm also a member of ACES, and I'm calling in to support for ordinance twenty-two forty-two. I, like several others that have called in, I am concerned about the cost of my services. And right now, I have negotiated a fee with the hauler that I use. But due to the lack of information, I have no idea if I'm overpaying or not. So what I'm hoping to do is to pay into a city-managed program where the city is able to negotiate a price that's fair and equitable and transparent to everybody that's affected by this. I realize that it's not the HOAs. The HOAs have already done that themselves. So I'm hoping that the city can do it, and then I'll know that I'm paying the same rate structure as my neighbor. And also, I'm only seeing a trash truck in my neighborhood one day a week instead of four days a week right now. So for these reasons, I'm really in favor of this. Additionally, I've lived in several places before I lived in Broomfield. And every place I've ever lived, the hauling services have been managed by the city. And I have never seen a decline in quality from that. And I've never seen anybody complain about it as much as people are complaining tonight. So I'm hoping that we vote in favor of this, and that's all I have to say. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you very much. Next is Sarah. You have three minutes.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Hello. Hello. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is Sarah Taylor. I live in First Filing. Lived in my current house for about thirty-five years. My reasons for wanting universal waste hauling are entirely personal. I, well, not entirely, but mostly. The whole time, I have been distressed by loud and smelly and noisy and sometimes rude trash trucks, at least four days a week, sometimes several times a day, four days a week, on the street and on the alley. When, most of them are polite, but the ones who don't put the cans away properly or let them roll into the road are not my trash company, so I can't complain. I think universal hauling is a great idea. I have also lived in other communities with city-managed trash, which was just great. The other thing I would like to say is, it would be helpful if you could provide people with the information of exactly what the opt-out fee would be, or at least the range. Maybe that was already provided and I missed it, but it might stop scaring people. And I pay for a great many things in Broomfield through my taxes that I do not use, but I appreciate them for other people. So thanks. I hope that you get this best. Have a good night.
All right, thank you. Well, that concludes our public comment section for this item. So questions from council are next. Members should limit themselves to questions during this portion. The time to introduce amendments and state positions for or against this item is later. Are there any questions from council? Councilmember Marsh Holsen.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two questions, I think, both for Ms. Rogers. Can you, only because I was texting her and asking the question. Can you explain why we couldn't release the contract tonight?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Marsh Holsen. And I was going to ask for some time to address that issue. Council could modify its direction on the concept of city-contracted waste hauler with its direction and vote on first reading tonight. There was an RFP process. A vendor has been selected for negotiations, not selected to provide services. But should council not approve this ordinance on first reading or have changes to how the foundation of this program is structured? That would impact these ongoing negotiations. Staff is prepared, after this first reading, if council approves the ordinance on first reading, to make those details public. But it was a little bit, a little bit cart before the horse. We were just worried that if we put out the information about the contract terms as they are today, they could change after tonight, and that would cause confusion.
And on that, so if we pass the ordinance tonight, the next meeting will include both the second reading of the ordinance and the contract approval. And all those details will be available prior to the meeting, and there'll be public comment, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so the public will be able to address any concerns with the details of the ordinance?
Yes.
Okay. And then one question for staff. On the three FTEs, I know I emailed some questions about it, and I appreciate your responses. Just have one question on the financial one that I'm a little bit confused. The answer was that we need another FTE because of the manual system we have, which I understand. And you have to add the opt-out people to the bills manually, correct? Is there a reason why that couldn't be a one-time temporary employee and not a continuous full-time employee? Since we're going to the ERP in the next couple of years anyway, which it won't be manual anymore, and the opt-out fee is probably going to be a one-time thing, why do we, I guess, why do we need a full-time employee permanent rather than just a temporary person to handle that?
The opt-out fee is billed on a monthly basis, and who opts out and opts in changes regularly. It's not a one-time billing. It's something that has to be done month over month over month.
Are other communities seeing people changing a lot, opting in, opting out on a regular basis? Or do they usually just opt out or opt in and then keep it that way?
That I don't know. I'd have to look into that.
Okay. And then on the customer service calls related to the other FTEs. Again, I was talking to one of the Arvada council members who recently did theirs. They indicated to me that their volume of calls decreased significantly after the initial rollout. That there was obviously a lot of initial calls, but then it kind of stabilized out. So again, the question is, why can't that, at least one of those FTEs be handled on a temporary basis just to handle that initial, rather than a permanent employee?
Our understanding from other communities that have done this, including Arvada, is that there is definitely a very high volume in the beginning. And there is some tapering off, but it doesn't taper down to close to zero. There are consistent amount of concerns. But something we could look at in preparation for the, finalizing the fiscal considerations for the second reading is thinking about on a temporary basis. What was provided as an estimate related to this ordinance is the prorated amount just for 2025?
Got you. Okay. And just to be clear, we're not approving a budget amendment for this right now. Those will all be handled during the budget process upcoming?
Those will be handled as a mid-year budget, a 2025 budget change mid-year request based on the direction from council on September tenth.
Okay, right. Thank you. That's all, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. Next is councilmember Win.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Harvey, these questions are for you, and again, thank you for your presentation. My first question is, a resident and member of the public asked, why is the waste divergence so low between two to four percent? Do you have any comments or just thoughts on that?
Well, there is, there's a formula on a spreadsheet that was helped, co-created by the nationally known consultants who helped put together the Zero Waste Plan. And our diversion estimates are based on our actual diversion data. So the amount of tons we send to landfill, the amount of tons that we recycle and compost every year. And those estimates are based on 2021 data as well. And there, we were surprised they weren't higher. But it is the story of the Zero Waste Plan, when you look at the relative contributions of each initiative that's proposed in there, is there isn't one that gets you eighty percent of the way. It's a bunch of smaller impacts and changes that are made across a wide array of settings and sectors. And that, all of them, they have the diversion impact from the initiative itself. So in this case, contracted residential waste services. And that gets amplified the more services you add in. So in terms of recycling and composting. And then if you amplify it with outreach and education, you can add to that effect.
Yeah, no, Lewisville recently announced that they're trying to do a hundred percent. And I know Broomfield's goals are pretty lofty as well. Obviously, this would be a positive step, but what would five years look like if we did, you know, embrace this plan?
Well, five years with only this plan?
Maybe other plans.
Yeah, it depends. The answer to that question depends a lot on what other policy and program initiatives we're able to implement. And I think in terms of the goals, the five-year plan that was envisioned is that we begin to reduce, reuse, and recycle more and more and more, and compost. And I think the most succinct way that I can answer your question is to say that there, we can continue to increase the impact of this program through expanding its coverage and adding services when it's time to renegotiate contracts. And it will require additional programs and policies to get us all the way to the goals.
And I have one more last question. Obviously, we've mentioned, discussed about the eight percent survey response of Broomfielders in favor. Obviously, some residents have asked for more details about that. Could you just go into detail on what the background for the survey was and what led us to, you know, initiating this? And, yeah.
The Broomfield Community Survey is something that we do every- Uh, the Brimfield community survey is something that we do every two or three years, every two years. And we ask our residents, uh, um, their views of the services that they're receiving, what they would like to see from the city. And the 2023 survey, which is conducted by, uh, National Survey Company. Sorry, it's getting late. What included this question about, um, which aspects of the contracted services that residents would be most in support of? And that's what the question was designed to tease out, was were there differences in support based on recycling versus composting HOAs and non-HOAs?
And one follow-up question, and this is just like a history question. Why hasn't Brimfield had a service like this before? I mean, obviously, as mentioned, a lot of cities and municipalities have usually provide waste disposal. Why hasn't Brimfield ever initiated that? It's, you know, forty-plus years as a city, or as a city and, you know, twenty years as a county.
Um, would you like to say something?
Well, I was just gonna say we don't know.
All right, we're not gonna do this. So I think you can kind of tell why it's a sensi, it's a sensitive issue. It's clearly a sensitive issue. So I know it's been talked about before and the same thing always happens. There's a lot of folks that are pushing back, so I think that the council's decided not to move forward. It's pretty obvious. It's, it is a sensitive issue and it always has been and still is. Ms. Al, Ms.?
Thank you, Ms. Harvey.
Yeah, you're welcome.
All right, that's all my questions, Mayor. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Um, councilmember Leslie.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, what's the purpose of the opt-out fee?
The purpose of the opt-out fee is to secure, um, a participation rate that reaches the goals, the waste diversion goals.
So if a person chooses to opt out, would that mean that that person would have to contract with a separate vendor? And so you'd still have other trucks coming into the neighborhood?
That's correct. Although our code does allow people to dispose of their trash without contracting a hauler, as long as they do it according to environmental and safety regulations.
And who monitors that?
Neighbors.
I know. Why, why do we need the, the additional staff? I mean, I know that not all of the HOAs have a single hauler contracts, but most of them do. As far as I know, and, you know, we have that at Anthem Ranch and, and we don't have any additional staff to manage that. Why couldn't the vendor selected, manage whatever that staff, uh, issues are, just like other vendors do? Why, why would we, why would the city have to have that staffing?
The vendor does have a significant amount of customer service responsibility. And whichever vendor we would end up contracting with, we would have high expectations because we're Brimfield and our residents have very high expectations about the services that they have access to. I think some of the difference comes in introducing the volume-based pricing model, which is more confusing for people in a way. And in the HOAs, many of you have been contracting, many HOAs have been contracting for trash and recycling for a long time now. It's not a new, there's not a lot of new rollout. Part of the, the anticipated, um, staff impact is providing support when people are confused about how they select their cart sizes and things like that. And again, we are gonna do everything possible on our side to make it clear and easy for people to choose the services that they want within, if this program moves forward. And there will always be confusion and phone calls, like, just like we have now when there's a snowstorm and people call us and ask, why didn't my hauler come pick up my trash? It's been three days and it's still here, or, um, and so we, the other thing that we know and have been told to anticipate from other cities is that, um, people who don't view this favorably sometimes take it out by, uh, illegal dumping at the recycling center, which already happens, and we have pretty, about seventy-five incidents a year already with people leaving stuff that shouldn't be left there at the recycling center. And we're working on ways to, to deal with that, so we're not spending so much staff time having to get rid of those things, but we do anticipate an increase in having to do that as this program rolls out.
But again, you probably, as was suggested earlier, in the beginning, there's going to be a lot of questions and there may be some staff need for that, but eventually that should, you know, phase out. And it would seem to me the vendor could be able to handle that kind of thing. And that would reduce the city's direct cost in that, that regard. So I, I just think you're hearing some of us would like to see that. One more question, because I've heard some kind of comments about city managed, uh, hauling. The city is not going to establish its own hauling organization, right? We're not gonna go out and buy trucks and hire people. We're gonna be hiring a private sector company, which will compete like any contract for government competes. So whether it's, uh, hiring a company to manage our printers or our computers or our hauling, it's, it's not a, you know, it's, it's not an illegal effort to dominate the public. We're simply trying to provide a better service for that. But we're gonna be hiring a private company that has the ability to do this, has proven itself to do this. Is that correct?
That's correct. We are not picking this on as a utility. We're contracting it out to a private company.
All right, but thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Mayor Perdemos Shaq.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So, uh, there were some questions that were asked by one of our residents that I wanted to make sure, uh, that were answered. So, uh, one of the big pieces that, uh, that he asked is why are HOAs exempt?
Well, the decision about how HOAs are incorporated in the ordinance and the contract is a policy decision. What I will say is, heading into this, we all believed that, including HOAs in the contract, would reduce prices for everyone. I think that was the assumption that we all heard as we talked about this last year. When we received the proposals, um, that turned out to not be true. For some haulers, including HOAs, increased their prices. For some, it decreased it, and for some, it didn't make a difference, which was very surprising to us as, as staff. And if the main justification for including HOAs is to achieve a better price for everyone and that, that can't be done, then the consideration is, do you allow HOAs to opt in rather than require them?
Thank you for that. Um, how, so, uh, with this contract, and this may be a, uh, a question that's more suited to the contract conversation, uh, but how often will the contract be renewed or reviewed or renewed?
Um, the renewal of the contract would depend on the contract term. And we were looking at three-year terms or five-year terms for an initial contract.
Okay. Uh, thank you for that. Um, so, uh, so with the forthcoming contract, and again, this may be a question that's better suited with the contract, so let me know. Uh, with the forthcoming contract, will the pricing be included that residents will, uh, pay? So in, in terms of, will the pricing be clear with that contract that residents are going to end up having to pay?
Yes, the pricing will be very clear, as will the length of the contract. And there is not a hauler I, who would bid on a one-year contract, I will say. It, it requires a huge amount of capital outlay for them. So putting, we, when we wrote the RFP, we asked for three, five, and seven-year pricing to see what they would propose.
Okay. And then, um, uh, again, another question that's probably more pertinent to the contract, but just wanted to ask at this point, uh, uh, will the residents have to pay for a new container? Or would they be able to use a, uh, existing container, or will a container be provided free of charge?
They won't have to pay.
For the container?
But they won't have to pay for their containers. And it's a, a point of negotiation, um, how customer, um, residents who own their carts now, what happens with that?
Okay, so we'll see that with the contract.
You will.
When it comes back. And can you remind me again what date, uh, we will see that contract?
Well, that, that actual contract is coming to you September tenth.
Perfect. Just wanted to get that all together. Thank you. I, I do have a couple of other questions that I wanted to ask. So, you know, of course, I need to point out, I get, I, I guess now I need to point out that I don't live in an HOA and I live in a single-family home. Uh, just for those people that are counting how many councilmembers do live in an HOA and those that don't. I don't live in an HOA. Um, but I appreciate the information, the presentation tonight. Thank you to the members of the ACES Committee, the Advisory Committee on Environment Sustainability, and thank you to the members who spoke tonight, both in person as well on phone. Uh, so a couple of questions. Um, so you had talked about, uh, there, there were three, uh, key tools to maximize waste diversion in the city contract. Provide, uh, recycling at no additional cost, charge a fee for opt-out, and pay as you throw. But the only key that you included with, or the only key that is included, sorry, I didn't mean to say you, but the only key that is included in the ordinance is the opt-out fee. Is that correct?
Correct.
Uh, so why aren't the other keys also included in the ordinance if those are important for achieving goals of the waste reduction? So those other keys would be the pay as you throw and the provide recycling at no additional cost?
Because those are contract provisions that we control through the negotiation with the haulers. And it's what's, it would, it's what's set out in an agreement with the hauler.
Okay.
Just looking over at Attorney Rogers to make sure I haven't missed a legal nuance in that answer. Okay.
Okay, I, I, I'll take that answer. Thank you. Um, and let's see, I have one more question. Just wanna make sure I. Oh, yeah, keep my, keep my timer running. I just, I just gotta find this question. I'm sorry.
Then it's, it's still time.
I'll have to, I'll have to come back to it. I can't find that question. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you. Um, I have three questions here. So there was a lot of questions about the, the workload right now. I just wanna, you know, verify, we've been working on this for a couple of years. And can we, can we implement this ordinance and continue this work without a significant lift from staff? Are we at that point where we've, the majority of the bulk of the work has been done?
No.
No, okay. So there is still, and will this impact the other?
The sustainability team is, um, on, on overtime. This process on, uh, it, it has been a, a full-time gig for at least two and a half of them for the last year and a half. And as we continue to add additional, um, requests in, uh, in the sustainability arena, there isn't going to, we don't foresee a time, Councilmember Anderson, to where part of what they're doing is going to be alleviated to the extent that they're gonna be able to pick up another portion, um, of, 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 of an activity. So we're not thinking that, uh, the FTE is going to be, um, a cushion, if you will. So, I mean, we, we have Ms. Harvey and her crew in the Public Works Department. One of the reasons that we moved the sustainability team over to Public Works was to be able to cross-pollinate with the other Public Works folks, so that we could have, uh, a shared environmental energy distribution, if you will, um, of, of what those look like. So those three FTEs, if we could absorb those three FTEs, it's, we, we do it every year in the budget. We look at that budget, we scrub internally to find out, um, where we are. They're not asking for any additional FTEs, but, uh, an additional load comes with an additional ask on those FTEs.
Okay, um, thank you. So we don't see relief coming if we just move this forward and get the contract in place? We have the three FTEs. Do we see this continuing to be a lot of work? I mean, if, if, as, if we just?
We don't, we don't know.
No.
What we don't, we don't know what we don't know. But from the communication with some of the other, um, organizations, again, this has been a two-year journey of, of, we've had a multiple conversations with other organizations about what worked, what didn't. So that we can learn from that on the front end. And, and, and this is a, this is another, um, it's another initiative that requires, uh, staffing. Are we confident to say it's gonna be three FTEs for the duration of the, 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 the program? No. But certainly for those, those first, whether it be twelve months or twenty-four months, we are confident that it's going to take three FTEs in order to get it up, get it rolling, get it managed, and get it administered.
Okay, that's helpful. Um, okay, so, um, so, so here's a question about HOAs that force. So here we are today. We know the map of who would and wouldn't be included with the HOAs that are currently offering trash services. If an existing HOA that currently doesn't offer trash services decided that they did want to offer that, that option, or as new HOAs are form, formed with new development, or if an HOA decided to join, could they then, uh, to join the city program, could they then go back to creating their own trash services? Is that something that you could, once they have a contract in place, they could then opt out of the program? Or once you're in, you're in? Like, how does the future work? Or do we want to tie in that question? Yeah, that's great. And, um, and the last question, this is a follow-up to Councilmember Marsh Volson's question. So we had the, he asked about the, um, not seeing the contract tonight, and we get past first reading, and then we can see the, see the costs. And so if we come back in a couple of weeks on second reading, we see the contract, and then we, um, wanna make a change. So, you know, we, we can go that process where we do the third reading, but then we would have already seen the contract and we avoided what we just, we're in the situation we're trying to avoid tonight. So is this like a situation, when we come back on September tenth? It's either, it's, it's either definite approve both, or we just don't proceed? Is that kind of the thought, that there would be no changes at that point?
Ms. Harvey, can I jump in on this?
Of course.
Council has a determination on both items. So if, if council decides that the ordinance needs amending on second reading, that is within council's purview, and you do that pursuant to your council rules. Um, staff will pivot if need be and will let you know that the contract needs to be tabled if that, if, if the changes impact the contract in that way. But nothing is going to take your decision-making ability away on this contract or the ordinance. I mean, they're, they're stacked this way because they're related, but also because of timing, because this has been a long process, because we didn't wanna lose time. But they are sep, they are separate votes, if that helps.
Okay, yes, that is helpful.
And one more thing I'll add, and Ms. Harvey, correct me if I'm wrong. This information's gonna be out soon, so it's not like on September tenth, you shouldn't, you're, you shouldn't hear anything that hasn't been in a staff packet or disclosed already for at least a week, if not longer.
Okay, thank you. If it does move forward, I look forward to public comments when they see those numbers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Member Cohen, sorry.
Sorry?
I had, I turned my mic off.
I just wanted to clarify a couple of things that were said in the public comment as to, so there's no confusion. There was a question about the number of households affected. I believe it was eight thousand estimate. I'm thinking we have about thirty thousand households in the community as a whole. Correct?
Correct.
So it's not one ten percent. We are not trailblazers here. A number of our neighboring communities already do universal trash hauling. Do you have handy a list? I know our exact, Fort Collins is about to implement, but a number of our neighbors to the west, I believe, have already done this.
Golden, Arvada, Louisville, Lafayette.
Norton and North Glen.
And they all have opt-out rates, rates, or opt-out.
Yes.
Features.
And even Loveland, who operates their own trash services, has an opt-out fee for people who want to contract.
It's a feature, not a glitch, in other words, to make these systems work. And I know in the process of, you did a lot of research to bring us to this point, so thank you for that. Part of that research, there was a survey of what HOA residents pay. Is that able to be shared, or was that proprietary?
It's not, it's not proprietary. It's on the Brimfield Voice page. I, I don't have the numbers in my head. What I can tell you is there was definitely a difference between HOA residents and non-residents who live outside HOAs. A pretty significant difference in the percentage who are paying more than thirty dollars a month. And we can bring that, um, all that detail.
I think it would be useful to share, just to give people a sense. I know there was some suggestion that this would increase potentially rates, which doesn't make sense economically, if you look at how this, how the rates are set. But I think, I'd encourage people to look at that, because it was revealing to me that, just for- just for follow counsel or the mayor pro temps, I live in a HOA that does not provide trash services, too small. Across the street is Red Leaf, which does provide service. No one has the opportunity to opt out because you violate your covenant. They pay about a third of what I pay because I don't have any competitive power to negotiate my rates. But anyway, I do think we'd encourage people to look at it and see what people who are in HOAs and who are enjoying universal waste haul contracts now pay compared to those who are out. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Lim.
Yes, most of my questions were answered. I did have one question about the future possibility that if we were to adopt this ordinance, how does it fit into the producer responsibility program proceeds that the state is can is working on or that the proceeds that they're working on right now, there's a task force working on the details? So what do we know about the possibility that we might receive some proceeds from that program to help with costs in the future?
Thank you, Councilmember Lim. That the program at the state level is still evolving. They're working on their implementation plan right now. The goal is, I believe, to provision of recycling services to all Coloradans to have the option for free. Who receives the reimbursement for providing recycling services is is under discussion? In the scenario that we're talking about tonight, where we contract with a private company to provide these services, the reimbursement would go to that company, we believe, as things currently stand today. It can change. There's rulemaking happening. And our, one of our approaches in negotiation has been to ask that any reimbursement received could be matched dollar for dollar in a price reduction.
Thank you. That answers my question. Thank you. Any other first round council member questions before we go to second round? Not seeing any, so we'll go to you, Mayor Pro Tem Sha.
Thank you, and thanks for your patience while I found this last question I wanted to ask. So seeing that HOAs would be exempted, if there was a future approved contract for waste hauling that an HOA approves, so specifically just the HOA approves, would the HOA have to adhere to the same standards of the city contracted waste hauling? And those standards that were outlined in your presentation are choice of cart size, volume based pricing based on trash cart size, recycling services included at no additional cost, households can opt out by paying a minimum service fee? Would those service, would those service standards be have to be included in that HOA waste hauling contract?
They would not. The way the ordinance is currently written is that the HOA would need to contract for waste collection services and recycling.
Thanks for that information. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Marsh Holsen.
Just one follow up question. So Ms. Hammerstein asked about the study, the Fort Collins study earlier. I sent it to her via email, but is there a way we could put that in our packet for the next reading and or put it on the Broomfield Voice page, link to it? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there any more questions from counsel? Not seeing any. So next is counsel's consideration of proposed ordinance number 2242. Will the clerk please read the proposed ordinance by title?
Ordinance number 2242, amending certain sections of Title 8, Chapter 4 of the Broomfield Municipal Code to Implement City Contracted Waste Collection Services.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance on first reading and order published in full and that a public hearing and second reading of the ordinance be held on September 10th, 2024 at 6:00 PM as allowed by City Council Procedures and Rules of Order? Councilmember Cohen?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Leslie?
Second the motion.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Leslie?
Thank you, Mayor. When I was running for this position, I was asked over and over and over again by people living in the non HOA communities, would I please support a single hauler? People were tired of having trucks trundling through their neighborhood every day, waking up their babies. I had people point out the roads and say, this road was resurfaced a couple of years ago, and it already needs to be resurfaced again because of all these trucks coming through. Please, if you get elected, would you please support this? There were more of them than are here. Everywhere we've lived, we had this service. This wasn't, so when I moved into the HOA, there was nothing to think about. It was just the guy came once a week and pulled away our trash. We have the benefit of that, and the people who are living outside of the HOAs don't have the benefit of that. And one of the reasons that we asked that the HOAs be excluded from this, several of us here at counsel asked that, because they have a contract already, and they're happy with that contract. But if there's a better deal, they'll go to the better deal. That's the way economics work in this country. And so they're free to be able to make that that choice. But a lot of the HOAs said, we already have a contract. We're very happy with the company that's doing. We don't have any complaints from our residents, so why should we be forced to shift? So everybody talks about being forced to do something they don't want to do. What about the the public? What about the people? What about our neighbors? What about our friends? What about folks that?
You wrap up, Councilmember.
I will, thank you. What about folks that really want to have one truck a week coming by to pick up their trash? We need to be thinking about them as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Marsh Holsen.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm supporting this tonight. As Councilmember Leslie just said, when I ran for office, this was overwhelming the people in my community that wanted, most of my board one is not HOA. And we don't, we, I I pay much more than what this contract is likely going to cost. And those people in the neighborhood are also going to see savings. You know, government shouldn't get involved in the free market unless it's a central service, and then the free market doesn't account for externalities and doesn't account for inefficiencies. This follows both of those. This is an essential service because people have to have trash picked up. The market does not account for externalities with the excess road damage. Road damage is a cumulative impact. Every car adds more damage. And yes, according to the study from Fort Collins, every trash, full trash truck is 1,250 cars. It's a cumulative impact. So yes, there's externalities that are not accounted for on top of the pollution that those trucks cause. The inefficiencies of the market is the pricing, the customer service. I had problems with my hauler just a couple of weeks ago, and I got nowhere on the phone. And frankly, I would have switched if it wouldn't have cost me $75 to have them come pick up the cans. And I knew this was coming, so I was figured I just waited out. And then lastly, the greenhouse gas emissions. This community supports greenhouse gas emission goals. I know not everybody agrees with that, but the majority of the community does. And I, and then the way I know that is that every single one of us sitting up here ran on greenhouse sustainability goals, and we were elected by the majority of the people. We live in a representative community, representative democracy, and the community wants this, and therefore we're going forward with it, and I support it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Anderson.
So trying to find the balance between these residents that want the single hauler service and the freedom to choose is proving to be extremely difficult. I'll just share that. There was concerns about a monopoly, and this goes away with HOAs exempted because there is competition. So that was, I appreciate that piece. During public discussions, seeing up to this point, the Anthem and Red Leaf HOAs, they were here, and they weighed in with strong support to continue providing trash and recycling services. So this really helps. I just want to share that, you know, as I, as someone who lives in a community with an HOA that provides the services, our HOA has tons of issues going on all the time, and trash has never risen to the top where the community is upset with the fact that we have a contract that covers all of us. So I don't know where this goes. So this comes down to the the second reading, when the contract details are finally out, and the public can digest them and weigh in. I'll vote yes tonight, but it's like we have to go to the next step to really understand. It's not, we don't have to approve it on second reading when those details are out. So I'll just show that. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Cohen.
I'll be real brief in just saying that I appreciate the issue that Councilmember Anderson brought up, and we heard in many emails and discussion tonight about freedom to choose, but I want to offer another F word, which is fairness. And someone also brought up the issue of discrimination. In our community, half of them live in HOAs. They are more affluent communities, and they pay a fraction of what people living in non HOA or HOAs without service pay. And that's an inequity in our community. And we have the opportunity to give those folks the ability to pay somewhat close to what people in the HOAs are paying, to maybe counter set what's going to come with water rates, but the real opportunity to pay less for trash service, to pay what other people are paying for trash service, and also hopefully expand recycling, reduce trucks traffic. I think overall, it's a plus for all our neighbors. So I'll be supporting this. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Wen.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to the public for coming in and voicing your opinions and thoughts on this important matter. I think I will also be supporting this as well, just based on the principle of green, you know, going for a green direction. I know two to 4% is does not seem a lot, but I think that a snowball effect can be maintained, and that the priorities of having Broomfield be more sustainable is important, giving an option for residents to have an opt in is very important. And I can make an argument saying that, you know, HOAs already have a monopoly. I mean, for some communities, there, this is the only viable, you know, whatever the HOA provides is what they get. And, you know, having a city provide its own option is a choice, and I think having choice for our residents in Broomfield is important. So thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Sha?
Thank you, Mayor. When I ran in a campaign in 2017 and again in 21, the most mentioned comment I heard from around was why there were so many trash trucks servicing the Broomfield community. I've heard from non HOA residential residents that there is a desire for less truck traffic, less trash trucks on the roads and cheaper prices than what are currently paid. It does give me pause that there would be a need for additional FTEs associated with this program. It does concern me that we could potentially create an unfair system between the HOAs and the non HOA residential communities, because it sounds like the city contracted waste hauling will adhere to the three key tools to maximize waste diversion in the city contract and the waste hauling standards. Meanwhile, the HOAs can opt for more efficient routes and the lowest cost waste hauling. This ordinance sets the policy and the structure for a city contracted waste hauling service to service the community, although mostly in non HOA areas, but it does go into effect with a future, only with a future contract. But the details of how successful or harmful this program could be on the first contract program could be will be on the contract process and in the contract itself. I will support this ordinance on first reading, but my support on second reading will be in line with the contract. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Lim.
Yes, I support this, and I just wanted to say I've, I don't need to say my reasons duplicate others. I just wanted to say thank you to the sustainability staff and ACES, who have followed through on our zero waste goals and GHD goals. We have been discussing this since 2020 in the Sustainability Advisory Group, and we've only gotten a glimpse, little glimpse, of all the work that staff has done to put this together and to figure out the best path forward. So I just wanted to say a word of appreciation to both ACES and sustainability staff. Thank you.
Thank you. And I want to thank everyone for coming out and staying late to give us your feedback. It is very important to hear from everyone and to hear all sides of an issue. I know I expressed concerns about not being able to get the contract out to the public so folks can actually see what we're we're negotiating. So Ms. Rogers, when will the public be able to see the proposal?
We will have the details of the proposal on the Broomfield Voice within the next I'm sorry, thanks, Julie, on, not on the voice, on the main page by by midday, end day tomorrow. Like I said, a lot was dependent on what happened in the discussion tonight and if there was a change in direction. So and then that second reading will be September 10th. So you're looking about three weeks for people to digest or submit questions or make their comments known.
Wonderful. Thank you for that update. So it'll be available tomorrow. So any more discussion? Seeing no further discussion, we'll move forward to the vote on ordinance number 2242. Counsel, please cast your vote electronically. While council members have entered their vote, and the results will be displayed on the screen, that passes 10 to 0. Next, under action items, are three proposed resolutions regarding nonprofit grants programs and possible distribution of additional funds from property tax and grant refunds. Counsel has a copy of the agenda memorandum, which I'll ask our staff to summarize.
Dan Casey, Director of Human Services, Mandy Wall, who is the Human Services Management Analyst, and Chris Duhurst is our Deputy Director. All three will be presenting this issue and item. We're going to start with Mr. Casey.
Thank you, Manager Hoffman, and thank you, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem and members of counsel, Dan Casey, Director of Human Services. I know it's been a long night, and there's a lot more information to go, so we'll try to be quick. I remember January 23rd, 2024, standing before you when we approved the initial nonprofit grant allocations and saying, hey, we're going to come back later this year because there may be more funding available. We budgeted $1,625,000 initially. That was a guess. That was an increase over what we budgeted in 24, or I'm sorry, in 2023, to the tune of about $62,000. The actual dollars that were collected were in excess of about $477,000, bringing our total to 2.1 million or just a little bit over 2.1 million. So our proposal tonight is based on our policy and based on the process that we go through annually, that we would like to make sure those funds are redistributed back to our local nonprofit agencies, that, as I've said many times on this podium, it takes a village, and they do a lot of work that we can't do. We don't have mental health clinicians. We don't run a food bank. Those are things that we rely on our local nonprofits to do. So tonight, we'll be presenting to you three different resolutions. One is Resolution 2024-100, and that's for the Community Foundation Grant Administration Fee. That's about $20,000. And Broomfield Community Foundation and Broomfield Department of Human Services have been partnering together now for a couple of years to administer these grants. Resolution 24-107, that would be allocating the additional funds. And then Resolution 2408, which is updating our policy on community outlays and for public purposes. Just wanted to quickly highlight some things, and then I will turn it over to Mandy Walk, who is our, as Manager Hoffman said, is our management analyst, and she really is the, I like to say, the brains behind our grant program, because she sets it up, she administers it, she works with all of our nonprofit providers, so she's got a very deep, broad understanding of the process. In 2024, again, we budgeted about $1.6 million. We had another return of about $25,000 from funding that we provided in 2023 that came back to us as part of our process. If a nonprofit agency doesn't use the money that we provided to them for the grant, they're required to return those funds to us. So that adds to that 477,000, bringing us to a grand total of 2.129334. We would like to utilize those funds, again, and I'll turn this over to Mandy to go through how we want to administer those funds. But these funds are specifically designated for Department of Human Services through our two point, I'm sorry, yeah, our 2.25 mil levy. 1.0 of that, 2.25, is dedicated to our nonprofit funding. Let me make sure that I have hit all my points, and then I will turn it over to Mandy. Yeah, I think I think just talking about our repeatable predictable process that we use every year, there's an established grant process. Roughly the end of August, we do a prequal for our grant process. Then we, for those entities that are eligible to apply, we accept applications in September. Then we, for those entities that are eligible to apply, we accept applications in September. All of the applications are due back to us and Human Services and Broomfield Community Foundation. By October, we process those, we score them, and we make decisions in December. And then, again, as I said, in January, we bring it before this board to approve those recommendations for funding. So with that, I will turn it over to Mandy Walk, and she will walk us through our proposal for distribution of the funds.
Hi, and good evening, Mayor, Mayor Potem, and councilmembers and community members. I'm Mandy Walk. I'm the Human Services Management Analyst with the Department of Human Services, here to talk to you about the staff recommendation for this additional funding for 2024. As you can see here, I'm going to talk about the first two resolutions that Mr. Casey referenced. If you could go to the next slide. Thank you. So the first resolution talks about the Broomfield Community Foundation. They serve in partnership with us for grant administration for these purposes. So the first resolution says to, recommends giving them $20,000 for that grant administration fee, which is at or below market rate for these types of services. And then the second resolution that Mr. Casey mentioned is the additional funding request that the department is recommending. So you can see here, we took a look at all possible iterations of using this additional funding, but this is our recommendation after assessing the different options. And you can see the bulleted parts here. These are the most critical community needs that we have, including behavioral, mental health services, family resource center, housing, intellectual and developmental disability services, and the Broomfield Community Services Network, which serves a unique function in the community as a nonprofit network that provides infrastructure to nonprofits and community partners. These agencies listed here relate to those service categories, and our initial recommendation is to move these agencies from what they initially received in January to full funding of their requests. So the funding would not exceed their original request, and all services would align with their original request. If you're curious what those services are, there's a link in your memo to the January memo that details the agencies and their services. Next slide, please. And then with the remainder of the funding, we're proposing to equitably distribute that across the remaining, the remaining tier-two agencies. Tier-two meaning the mid-level funding agencies. And you can see those agencies here and the proposed award amount increases. And I will turn it over to Mr. Duhurst to talk about the policy updates for the third resolution.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Potem, and members of council. Chris Duhurst, Deputy Director with Human Services. So wanted to cover the Resolution 2024-108. So if you want to move to the next slide, there are three bullets. I would like to cover some technical amendments to our community outlays for public purposes policy. First bullet is a ratification that changes our community-centered board, our CCB, to a case management agency that aligns this with the case management redesign legislation. And so ultimately, Imagine and Adult Care Management, Inc. have merged to create ANI avenues and will serve as our case management agency. So that is a technical cleanup to reference to, from CCB to a case management agency. The second is to codify our partnership between DHS and the Broomfield Community Foundation for the administration of the tier-one and tier-two grant process that we had started in 2023. And I think also worth noting within the amendment on 108 is that there's a language cleanup there as well from the Library Arts History and Extension that is referencing the Broomfield Arts History and Cultural Council. And the third and final bullet, if you can change slides, is the desire to do a nonprofit grant pilot. And so DHS is proposing a new structure of funding for the Broomfield Community Services Network and up to four tier-three organizations to move to a one-year base funding plus three for a total of four years of baseline funding for agencies that are serving to meet a critical need within our community, that look at those four areas being the Family Resource Center, which addresses food insecurity and housing, or mental and behavioral health, ADD, and housing within that. And so we believe with stable baseline funding for those agencies that they will be able to better plan, strategize, and streamline their services over that time with the use of those funds.
So again, I think that's a lot of information that we threw at you quickly. It's in the memo. It's in the presentation that we have here. But really, the big three things are, one, if we could go back to the second slide, please. Just making sure that, one, we're giving the Community Foundation Grant Administration Fee. That was the $20,000 that Mandy talked about, actually back to the resolutions at the very beginning. There you go. And then the second one is allocating the funding, as Mandy broke down, for fully funding those agencies and then proportionately funding a balance of the other agencies on that second chart, and then updating the policies. And again, that policy update is, in, for the most part, is technical cleanup, right? The CCB, and again, we could probably spend all day talking about what is the CCB, and what does Imagine do, and what does ACMI do? But really, that's our single entry point. It's our case management agency for individuals with disabilities. The state, actually, the feds passed the law, the state passed the law, and as of January, or I'm sorry, as of July 1st of this year, there is no more CCB. Now it's called a case management agency. So they provide case management for those ADD populations. Again, that's a separate piece that we fund, because that's part of what this grant, or these grant dollars, I'm sorry, not the grant dollars, the mil levy dollars go towards. But again, here is basically what we're asking, three things. I know that's a lot of information, and we will hang tight to answer questions.
Well, thank you for the presentation, Mr. Casey, Ms. Walk, and Mr. Duhurst. We will now proceed with public comments, which will be limited to 90 minutes for this item. We had to sign up, and we'll hear from six people in person and then one online until we have gone through the list. When I call your name, please come to the podium and state your name and neighborhood for the record. The two that we have signed up are Bill Cruthers and Roxy Jewell. Is Bill Cruthers still here? Not seeing him. Roxy Jewell, you're up. Oh, I'm sorry. You're next on the list.
Roxy Jewell Lockmore. Usually I have a lot to say about this, because I'm not one for giving out taxpayers' money to everything. But with the way it was presented tonight, I guess it's, the top part of the line said this was from the extra tax money from the city taxes. But if it's what's allotted to us from the state, I guess we don't have a choice. But I don't like my tax money being given to people who don't really need it. I think too much money is given away for nothing. And I've worked many gardens where people who wanted the food but didn't want to pull a weed to get the food. So it's kind of irritating when they, we just give the money away and they go buy the best that they can get, and I'm still eating my veggies out of my garden, and they're eating shrimp and lobster. So I have a little trouble with giving away money that is my tax money, and I don't have a choice on where it goes to. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there any else, anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, questions from council are next. Members should limit themselves to questions during this portion. Are there any questions? First up is Councilmember Mar Scholten.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Casey, this, this portion of the property tax mil levy, this is something that we have, that has been set aside for this purpose, correct?
That's correct.
And how long has that been a policy of Broomfield?
The mil levy, 20 years? I don't, I would have to defer to Manager Hoffman. I, it's been...
I don't know.
Yeah, we will find that information out for you before we leave.
I don't need to specify. My point was that it's a long time and that this is a policy that Broomfield has had to give these funds to nonprofits for... It's a policy that's dated back to any of us, so.
Right. The initial policy, so that it's been a practice in Broomfield since the mil levy was established. The initial policy that is referenced in the memo was in 2009.
Okay. That's the only question I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mar Scholten. Next up is Councilmember Lim.
I have a question about the pilot program. So if, what, there will be up to four entities who are given three years of funding, correct?
That's correct.
Is, is there an assumption that the funding available from the proceeds of the mil levy stays at least constant or increases? Because I guess my question is, otherwise, we may have only four organizations funded in year two or three if all of a sudden everything, the bucket drops out or something, you know? Do you understand my question?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Lim. Yes, the, the mil levy is sustainable. The mil levy is that 2.25 for human services, of which 1.0 is dedicated to this program. Every year, in the six and a half years I've been here, it's been, it's increased. In some years, it's increased by a percent or two. In '24, it increased according to tax revenues. So, yeah, I believe that it will stay sustainable. The other part of that is, dependent on what that mil levy generates for us, that if it's a 3% increase, that pilot program would get that 3% increase in their annual allocation for that, that three-year pilot project. If it goes down, if it drops 4%, then they would receive a 4% reduction. But that's at least known to them ahead of time, so that they're not trying to balance this, this, you know, very tumultuous number. Every year, it's different.
Okay, thank you. I understand the benefit to the nonprofits. So thank you for that explanation about what would happen in the case of the fluctuation. That's it.
All right. Seeing no other questions from council at this time. Next is council's consideration of proposed Resolution Number 2024-100. Will the clerk please read the proposed resolution by title?
Resolution Number 2024-100, approving use of additional 2024 Department of Human Services nonprofit grant funding.
Is there a, is there a motion to approve the resolution? Councilmember Wynn?
I make this motion.
Councilmember Ward?
Second motion.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. We will now move forward to the vote on the Resolution Number 2024-100. Council, please cast your vote electronically. And all members have entered their vote. The results will now... I'm sorry. Councilmember Henkel, if you'll click your button again, or state your, state your vote.
Mine's a recusal vote.
Oh, perfect. Thank you for that. All right. So all council members have entered their vote. The results will now be displayed on the screen, and that passes 9 to 0 with one recusal. Will the clerk please read the proposed resolution? We will now move on to the proposed Resolution 2024-107. Will the clerk please read the proposed resolution by title?
Resolution Number 2024-107, approving use of additional 2024 Department of Human Services nonprofit grant funding.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution? Councilmember Ward?
So moved.
Is there a second? Councilmember Delgadoio?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing no, seeing no discussion, we will now move forward with the vote on Resolution 2024-107. Council, please cast your vote electronically. And all council members have entered their vote. The results will now be displayed on the screen. And that passes 9 to 0 with one recusal. Next is council's consideration of proposed Resolution 2024-108. Will the clerk please read the proposed resolution by title?
Resolution Number 2024-108, approving the 2024 amended policy on the community outlays for public purposes.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution from my right side of the dais? Councilmember Lim?
So moved.
Is there a second from, we have another one from the right side. Councilmember Henkel?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, we will now move forward to the vote on Resolution 2024-108. Council, please cast your vote electronically. And all council members have cast their vote. The results will now be displayed on the screen, and that passes 10 to 0 unanimous. The final item this evening is a request for, and thank you to our staff for the presentation. The final item for this evening is a request for future action from Councilmember Mar Scholten regarding RV and long-term parking, street parking. Before I ask Councilmember Mar Scholten to provide a brief five-minute summary of the request, I would remind council that this is not a discussion on the topic, and instead, the opportunity for council to provide staff direction on whether or not council desires staff to dedicate time and resources to this request. Councilmember Mar Scholten, I turn your time overdue for five minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. I will not take five minutes. So, you know, Ward 1 is largely a non-HOA area, and it seems like, and lower income than, than some of the other areas of Broomfield. Over the year, last three years, I have received numerous complaints from residents, both in email and also when I was knocking doors, regarding RV parking on streets, long-term parking of cars, you know, people living in RVs, that type of thing, cords going across the sidewalk. And then last week, two weeks ago, I got a phone call from a business owner in the industrial area over by Main and south of 120th, who was upset about several RVs that were parked in front of his business, and they were in disrepair. Going over this, I know we talked about this before. Back in 2019, council looked at ordinance to deal, to do some sort of ordinance for long-term parking. It wasn't moved forward at that time. But given that it's been five years since this has been discussed, and given that it's, it's an issue for some residents, I would like to have a discussion of it. I don't know where I would fall on it and, or on potential ordinance. But I think it is something that's worthwhile to discuss. That said, it is also upcoming, we're starting the budget process, and I don't think this is a priority of, at all compared to that. So it, I would like to discuss it in the future, but I think we should hold it off until after all the budget stuff is done. So that's my thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mar Scholten. Are there any questions or comments from council regarding this item? We do need direction from council on whether or not to move this forward for future consideration. I'm not sure who was one, because now I just see two.
That's weird.
But we'll go with Councilmember Delgadoio first.
So I want to get a sense of what timing might look like for this. Is this just going to show up on the next available slot? Is this, I know we've been over this before. I just would like clarification.
May I?
Yes, of course, Mayor.
I've been through this couple of rounds, because it kind of makes its way back. The last time council discussed this, it was split. And, and there's, there's lots of reasons why, I mean, HOAs don't allow it, but in non-HOA areas, it is allowed. And, and some residents chose those neighborhoods because of the, the ability to park their vacation home there. And I, I kind of lean on the side of, well, that's, that's what they agreed to, to live in a place where they could park their trailers, rather, rather in a place where they couldn't. So I feel like it's kind of moving the goalposts on folks who have chosen a place to live where they can park their campers.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Councilmember Delgadoio?
Yeah, that, that is, that is helpful to know. Just, but in terms of scheduling, getting this on the calendar, this is specifically for the next available meeting, or no, I'm just, I know this is in our rules. I have forgotten that. I would just like to ask that. I have forgotten that. I would just like to ask that question so that that can be answered very quickly.
Right, I'll turn that over to staff.
We are packed.
Yes, we are.
We'll, we'll have to get back to you with the, with the date. And, and not just a date on the, not just a date on the calendar, but from a capacity perspective, for staff to research it, review it, code review it. We'll get back to you on those, on, on both of those.
Okay, that's helpful to know because in my mind, I'm open to it. It's just not really a high priority for me and that's my only thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Leslie?
Yeah, I'm just responding to your query about getting some guidance from council. My understanding was that there was more to it than just parking, that there were issues around waste and related issues that were creating concerns for some of the neighbors. So I'd certainly be in favor of, of having that discussion. But again, to City Manager's point, perhaps in the fall, after some research and other things are available to us to give us a better framework for the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Leslie. Councilmember Cohen?
Just a quick question. Remind me of current policy outside of HOAs. You can't park an RV on the street for extended period of time, can you, or your boat or your business vehicle? Is that the current situation?
So there isn't really an ordinance addressing the long-term parking of RVs, but code compliance does respond to complaints. So then it goes to the operability of the vehicle being parked on the road. And so they have to be legally parked. So if it's taking up too much space or maybe blocking a driveway, they have to have valid license plates and they have to be in operable conditions. And if they're not, that's when code compliance will talk to the RV owner. But generally, you know, you could have an RV parked for a long time on a public street.
In front of someone else's house.
On, on the public street in front of someone else's house, yeah.
Seems worth addressing.
Councilmember Ward?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I actually have a question very similar to Councilmember Cohen, so thank you, Ms. Rogers, for, for that. I would be open to having a conversation about it, but like Councilmember Dalgadoio is not a high priority. So if it gets pushed off to beginning of next year, when there's maybe more time, I'm certainly open to that potential.
We would certainly appreciate that. We had, just, just as, just as an FYI, in the last 18 months, we've had 11 inquiries and nine of them have been resolved by the resident. Broomfield's highly compliant. And, and the other three required additional time for them to either get licensing or identify another spot, but all of which were resolved. Just to put some context around it.
Yeah, I'm, it's not a very high priority given that information. So if council feels the need to have that conversation, I think it should be had next year.
Thank you, Councilmember Ward. Councilmember Henkel?
I support this for 2025. I think we have a lot of budget issues for the fall. So I do support this, this discussion. It has come up before on City Council quite a few times and I would like to have this addressed and at least see what other cities and counties are doing.
Thank you for that. Before we go to second round, are there any other comments for first round? Councilmember Anderson?
This is not a high priority for me, so I'm not even going to say 2025 when, when the time comes and staff has availability because other things are going to come up as well. So thanks.
Councilmember Lynn?
I would support this discussion sometime in 2025. Thank you.
And any other first round comments? Seeing none. Councilmember Mar Scholson, second round?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I agree this is not a high priority. This was brought to me by several residents. It's not a high priority to everybody, but it is a high priority to those people. I do think there are things that are higher priority to the entire community, like the budget, for example. So I'm okay with pushing this back until we have the space. Early 2025 would be what I always thought, thought so. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mar Scholson. And while I have the mic on, I'll, I'll address my comments. So, you know, December 2025 sounds like a great time to have this conversation for, you know, some of our public that, that laughed, that is when I'm off council. But, you know, I was on council when this conversation first came around. I did not support it then. I, I don't think that this is something that, that is a high priority for our community. I do think that this solves the problem for a handful of residents. And this is a, ultimately, a neighbor dispute. And to, to have the full community provide an ordinance around a neighborhood dispute that a couple, a handful of neighbors are dealing with, I don't think it is the right tool to, to utilize. So I don't support this conversation. Any other question, any other comments on this agenda item? Seeing none, it does sound like that there is a direction for council to have this at a future conversation. December 2025 does sound like a great, you know, date as was suggested. So, you know, anytime around then would be fine. But I do think that, you know, there isn't any hurry in 2024 to have this conversation. So with that, is there any other business to come before the council, from my council colleagues or staff? Seeing none, I'll remind council colleagues that the executive session that started prior to this meeting will need... I'm sorry, I'll turn it back over to the mayor.
I've heard from several of you that the late hour is, is getting late. So if we don't want to reconvene tonight, we can keep the meeting. We have to continue the conversation in two weeks. And people packing up, as you can see. So I think the decision has kind of been made. Well, yeah, no, but it is late. So I checked with Manager Hoffman and so we will reconvene in two weeks.
Okay.
So there being no further business, the business meeting is adjourned. Thank you.